Good evening and welcome to the eighth meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the Planning Board and our staff. If you would like to start, Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Sean Fahey, member.
Maggie O'Fields, member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And now for our staff. Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Josh? He's muted on Zoom.
He's muted, not visiting.
He's okay. Tim?
Tim, so he's going to be a couple minutes.
A few minutes late. Okay. All right. We'll introduce them when they arrive. Josh, unless you can get unmuted, we'll let you introduce yourself. Josh is with us and Tim will be joining us shortly. So why don't we just keep, we'll keep moving at this time. We'll begin with our administrative items. We have a new set of minutes that were, that came in from Julia, but you have not had a chance to edit yet. So we're going to defer the minutes from the
28th.
28th of September. Motion to defer the minutes?
I'll make a motion to defer the minutes from September 28th.
Wait, a second?
One second.
Great. All in favor?
Hi.
Perfect. And then we have the discussion of our next meeting dates. We currently have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the 12th. And then we also have a meeting scheduled for the 26th. And at this time, we don't have any additional meetings, but we'll determine that later tonight, if how we feel if we need to add meeting time with our consultants. And we'll give just a minute to our, Tim and Josh, Josh, you're with us now. So would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, Josh, I currently, apologies for the issue. Whenever I connect with my headphones, it mutes the system. I can't hear anyone. Apologies.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Welcome. And Tim, would you like to just introduce yourself?
Tim Jawinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Great. And Tim, do you want to hold off on staff update? Or do you want to just?
I can, I can do a quick staff update.
Do that? Okay.
Just two really quick items. We had our departmental budget kickoff meeting this afternoon. And one thing should be familiar refrain, we should probably be thinking of budget priorities for the next fiscal year. The request on the part of the town administrator was the typical sort of level service budget, and then also any supplemental budget requests. I think the town administrator and the finance director are trying to get an idea of kind of what the, we do the level budget, you know, every year and it kind of kicks over. But I think they want a little more information about what departments and boards kind of feel, you know, they actually need. And so I think if not next meeting, in the next couple of meetings, we should probably think about, you know, what we want to do in the, in the coming fiscal year and what potential additional budgetary resources. They want that by the 27th. So between now and then, we should probably have an agenda item to talk about that.
Okay. October 27th?
October 27th, yeah.
That gives us
Budgets and, yeah.
Okay.
And then the second thing, a nice bit of something if you're interested in, the town is actually having a employee appreciation luncheon on Wednesday, the 11th. And boards and committees are invited. So that'll be around lunchtime on Wednesday. I'll send around all the relevant info. It'll be at Castle on Aging. There is such a thing as a free lunch. So come and get it.
Right. Well deserved. Our
It's going.
Employees are certainly should be thanked for all of their service. So that's terrific. At this time, we now can move to citizen speak. And if there's anyone either on Zoom or in the public who would like to speak on anything, you will have an opportunity to speak later on specific items. But if it's a more general comment, feel free to come forward and join us and just you can state your name and address for the record.
To be clear, it's one of our specific agenda items, the development along Granite Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Should I wait till then or?
Either way, either way is fine. You can either, if you
Sure.
Want to wait for the
I want to clarify, we're not talking about any development along Granite Avenue. We're talking about zoning.
Zoning.
Zoning, okay. This is the first week I've heard of this. So I feel like I might give a little background before I make a comment.
All right, then you can wait. And maybe when we start to talk, and then you can feel free to approach us. Yeah, just wave in. Are there any hands up on Zoom?
There's one in the attendees. Ashley. All right.
Great.
Hi, yes, thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm, I don't know if my video is on, but I just wanted to clarify if I would have permission to speak on behalf of my parents. They are unfortunately experiencing some health issues and unable to attend this meeting. They are current residents of Riverside Avenue, which is off of this, off of Granite Avenue, would be directly impacted by this zoning. I previously was a resident there for over 30 years. So just before the meeting gets started, I just wanted to be sure that I would be able to speak on their behalf.
Yes, absolutely, Ashley.
Thank you so much.
There are no more hands raised in the Zoom.
Oh, we just lost her. Okay. Right. Maybe she'll speak later. Okay. So we can now, no other hands, move on to our old business, East Milton zoning update with Josh Vialla from MAPC. Well, welcome, Josh.
Josh is joining us on Zoom, like me.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Looks like my video is not working now. Sorry about that. Well, I had a little bit of change of plans in terms of what I was going to present to you this evening based upon the attending the meeting last week with the Planning Board and the discussion around the 3A zoning. And that change is to suggest a schedule adjustment in our East Milton Square work together. And the suggestion would be, as we had talked initially, initially started discussing last meeting, moving toward a community forum in the beginning of November sort of timeframe. I would suggest, in light of the discussion around 3A, which involves East Milton Square, to reconfigure the schedule such that we would host a first community forum, say, in the beginning of January, which would be subsequent to the town meeting related to 3A. I think there's, there's several benefits to that. Hopefully, the board would agree. And I've also discussed this very briefly with Tim and Josh via email. But the benefits, as I would pose, would be to give the 3A process the space that it needs and deserves at this moment, to allow the East Milton Square work to benefit from the results of the 3A recommendations, and then also to avoid confusion in that public forum, which may arise from sort of concurrent zoning processes that are underway. So invite the
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, Josh. That's thoughtful of you to consider that. Would
I, you know, my opinion is that I'm not a proponent of delaying that. I think it's an opportunity to explain to the residents both of these. Because, you know, we can see that we have a rising level of knowledge and awareness of what's going on, but it's still not where it needs to be. We have a resident that's here tonight. Tim's been terrific sending emails along to us for emails that have come in, you know, to Tim and to Josh of people that are just becoming aware of it. I'm, I'm a proponent of continuing on the schedule. And I think it's an opportunity to help people understand what is being thought of for East Milton Square.
So Josh, given what Sean said, maybe it's a different agenda for that forum. Maybe it's a more general kind of explaining these two initiatives and how the work that you're doing is different than the MBTA communities work, but how they're
complimentary.
They're informing one another, I guess, is what I would say. Yeah.
And I would also
I would, I would
Sorry. Go ahead, Josh.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I think that, yeah, from our position, I'm always open to, and I think community engagement at any point in any process is a good and right thing. I think it, to configure it in the way Cheryl that you were suggesting would make sense, we may potentially want to think about additional speakers beyond myself, since I may not be best positioned to talk through the details of the 3A approaches.
Absolutely.
Josh, I think that's, I think that's a, I think it's a great idea because there is confusion. And we've been talking about the overlay zoning in East Milton Square for a long time. I think people are confused. I think it would actually be beneficial.
I think this, this idea that the MBTA communities were setting the dimensional parameters such that the incentive would not be there to use that zoning, but it would rather, the incentive would be there to use the overlay zoning. I think that kind of discussion people need to understand. I mean, I think we understand it, but that's definitely something that could be explained. Because I'm sure people will ask, well, you know, as we did in the beginning, why include East Milton Square? And we have our reasons for it. And we're designing it in a way that we think makes sense, but it's probably not well understood.
I agree.
Would it be a separate meeting or within ours?
No, I think that would be just a, a meeting to talk about East Milton Square.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Public.
Jim, it's not, it's not here. It's on that schedule that Josh had presented. So it's a separate public meeting, right?
It would be at the, at the Milton Arts Center is what they were targeting, I think.
Makes sense.
Location.
I think there's a lot of East Milton residents who have been looking forward to the overlay zoning and seeing some things start to maybe happen there that
Yeah, well, you know, the, the sort of, how would you call it bruising, maybe processes of the last several years between the, you know, two projects that have gone forward there. I think the, the hope is that the zoning will make things less bruising when the next one comes along.
Right.
And so, you know, the, the longer it takes, the potential for something to come along, I guess, it gets potentially greater.
So my only concern is just watching the schedule for the holidays. So I think we'd have to be very mindful and really choose a date that a lot of people can, can attend.
Well, let's actually think about that, too. We have to have a public hearing on the MBTA communities.
Yeah.
And so I guess that could be one of the Planning Board meetings. But at the same time, we have an application before us that we, we have to move along, right? The, the 111 Highland Street. So I guess, Tim, have you kind of mapped out what a calendar would look like between now and, say, Thanksgiving to, for, are you and Meredith, have you looked at that? Like how these public hearing and this forum and the agendas for the meetings?
I was hoping the board would talk about that tonight.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. That we definitely should talk about
Okay, so we should definitely talk about that.
That tonight?
Yeah.
That will, had you, did we have a tentative date in November that was set for that forum? Did we have
For, yeah. For the East Milton Forum?
For the East Milton Forum.
Josh, sorry.
Yeah, there, there were dates that were suggested. They were November 2nd, November 6th, the 7th, and the 8th. And I believe all, all were available at the Art Center.
So I would think maybe the earlier in November, but
Josh, would you, was it four separate opportunities? Second, 6th, 7th, and 8th?
No, that was, we were just targeting a single event on one of those four dates.
Okay. Choose one date.
Mm-hmm.
8th doesn't work for me. 2nd, 6th, and 7th works.
So, so I feel like, I would say maybe the 2nd doesn't work, just in case we need to have a meeting.
So let's think, like, we have Thanksgiving on the 23rd, right? Which would be normally the meeting date, right? The 4th Thursday. So if we said the 2nd Thursday is the 9th, and we have town meeting the 4th of December, let's think about all these dates, right?
So it seems on the 7th.
So what about Monday, the 6th?
Yeah.
November, Monday, November 6th, that would work.
That works for me.
Yeah. It's fine. I'm out of the country, but do it. Yeah. I'm, I'm actually out every one of those dates.
Out of the country, everyone to those dates?
Glad to be so.
Hopefully on vacation. You can watch it. You can watch it. Yeah. But that's, okay. So what, let's try to plan for that. I think that, you know.
So are we saying the 6th, Monday, the 6th?
Yes, that's what.
Yep.
Now, in addition, in addition to the members, we need the community, right? Monday feel like a good night for the community?
I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a, a meeting, it's not a common meeting night for other boards and committees.
Good point.
So I think that's beneficial.
Less conflicts. Yeah, I agree. I think the 6th, I'd agree.
Would that be an hour and a half, Josh, do you think?
Yeah, I think that's pretty typical for that type of meeting. It's, gets, gives us enough time for the discussion, but doesn't get, doesn't drag on.
So from 7:00 to 8:30?
And it really is not being hosted by the Planning Board. It's being hosted by you. So there's not a lot of prep for us. Is that correct? Would that be a correct statement?
We would not be running the meeting.
Yes, yeah.
But we would, it would be posted Planning Board meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we would
Excuse me.
We would be there and present and
Okay.
And supporting Josh and
Yep.
And Tim with questions.
Yeah, I think in the adjusted format, we can discuss this beyond, within this meeting, of course, but we, we'll certainly take a lead role in facilitating the presentation and discussion. But I think we'll, would like to partner with someone on the town side who will take a, a lead role in the 3A aspects of the presentation.
That's fair enough. I think we can, we could do that. All right.
Tim, does that night work for you? Because I, when, when, when Josh refers to that
It'll work for me.
That's some, that's someone.
I, I think, I think Josh is referring to Tim.
I'll be there.
Yeah. So Tim has become an expert.
So Josh, I do think it would be helpful to us if we just got a, a look at what your presentation materials would be in advance, just so we can have a little bit of time to think about it, rather than seeing it for the first time at the forum.
And Josh, I guess, what is, what is the timing of, of mapping? Because I know we've started with the general district, but is that something we should be looking at? Or is that discussed that evening? But I, I think it's sort of a, a good starting point that we sort of know exactly what the boundaries are.
I think there was also to be sort of a visual mapping. So what the, the character of the district is, you know, not just, kind of a little bit like what I did for the Elliott Street area a little bit, but also with photographs and probably a little, and a little bit more information than I had. But I think that's going to be really useful and helpful.
Yeah, I do have, I don't know if the, the board wants to spend the time this evening. I do have some of that information available that we can look at, but I'm, I think I need to be elevated to a panelist, maybe, so I can share that potentially.
Great.
Josh, you should be able to share your screen now.
I can turn my video on as well.
Hey, there he is.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you all. So would you like me to share that presentation, just to walk through some of these things?
That would be great. Yes. We're still just seeing you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm struggling with my Zoom interface currently.
That's okay. Just, sometimes it's hard to tell.
It's funny how you get these, like
Right, because you're looking
The expressions on faces, like when the person's obviously looking at their computer screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. It actually looks like I'm going to have to do a restart to make my, my, I just did a, a full sort of system reboot, and I need to set the permissions in Zoom. Which would you prefer? Me to duck out real quick and come back? Or maybe I could just talk you through it? Is there a preference, given other things you have on the board's agenda this evening?
Maybe we could talk about the schedule while he does that.
Yeah, we could do a little discussion of, for the schedule and looking at the dates of when we're going to hold our other public hearings.
Right.
Sounds great. I'll be right back.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Sounds great. Okay. So this is jumping ahead just a bit. But we, so Tim, if we were to schedule a public hearing on the Select Boards article, we would post that, we, we need two weeks. So that's, would go into the next week's paper. So is that technically considered posting? Or when?
You could, you could do the 26th, and we could post a, a legal notice on the 12th and the 19th.
Okay.
And then obviously beyond that, plenty of
Would that work for people to do that on the 26th?
Works for me.
So October?
October 26th. Public hearing for the MBTA, the Select Boards article.
That's fine. So how does that work? We have a hearing on the Select Boards article. And at that point, can they make changes to it after that? Or do we have to have another hearing if they make changes?
Yeah, so I have a similar question, but are we jumping ahead? Should it be discussed during the MBTA discussion? Or is it just now?
Let's just have it as a hold on the calendar for now.
Just maybe a tentative date. Okay.
Okay. And then I do have
But that is a good question. No, those are good questions.
Yes, I have.
Okay. Because if we, if we do it, then we have to have another one because they've changed it.
Right, so that
We're, you know, we're out of time.
I do know, we've had some experience with that in the past, and it depends on the level of change. So that's the way town council has ruled it in the past.
It looks out of scope from what they've
If it's significant enough that, what, what was advertised. Anyway, we can go into that later.
And the, the, the theory behind all of this is by, if we're gonna, we're gonna have a hearing on the 26th, and we're gonna run an ad on the 12th, whatever article exists when the newspaper hits the stoop on the morning of the 12th, that's what the public hearing is about. And so, you know, then
So you're not going to have the full language in the paper, though. So you're going to refer to, this came up with, previously with the codification, right? It's got, you're going to refer to where it is on the
Yep. It'll, we'll, we'll link to the website, and it'll be on file in the clerk's office. It'll be on file in my office.
Okay.
So the article they have right now, would that pass, not town meeting, but would that pass with EO HLC?
I don't know.
You don't know?
We have, we haven't submitted anything to them for like any sort of pre-approval.
Okay.
But we're talking about a public hearing. I agree. Let's hold the date to 26th.
All right, yeah. And let's back, because we're gonna, let's also talk about our other public hearing dates, because we have
When did we
111 Highland.
Did we continue that, too?
So that's two, on the 12th is the, we had that. And then we also had Bents, but they've sent an email that they are going to ask for an extension from Bents. I think they're still working on a plan that
They continue, they were continued to next week as well, right?
I think so.
They were, but they Yeah, but I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to open that hearing and then continue
And then continue, exactly. Yes. So we were, we were supposed to have two public hearings, but right now, we will just have 111 Highland next week, which actually I think is better, just to be able to focus primarily on 111 Highland Street. And then we would have on the 26th.
We would do the public hearing?
We would do the public hearing for Bents Pleasant Streets.
So Tim, is it best to have, to have two dates advertised so that if there, if there were edits in between? No, because you're going to, if you have different language, no. Okay. Never, never mind.
You don't have any, Cheryl, you don't have any idea how big a significant change is, do you?
Well, and, and, and the thing about the public hearing is that there's a difference because there's sort of, it's a, it's a spectrum, you know? Right now, it's all fair game, right? The, once you get to the public hearing, the, the language, the language really can't change in the two weeks of the advertising period. But the principle of the public hearing is you hear it from the public and you discuss it publicly. And, you know, there's still, there's still room to, what, what really is sort of the tricky part is, once it's printed in the warrant, then that's where the real kind of conversation about is this with or within or without the scope really comes into play. So I think there's a little bit more leeway to make those edits and make those changes in the context of the public hearing, as long as it's sort of prior to the printing of the warrant.
So once again, how big a changes are we talking? Like map lines or district or just a height requirement?
If you do something that's, like, I would say, Tim can correct me, but I would consider a map boundary significant enough to require another public hearing. If, if it was something, let me see, like, okay, you add that a landscaping requirement between parking spaces, that seems less so, right? So you can kind of, you know, gauge the, you know, level of change. Something that impacted density numbers, setbacks, things like that. I think that people would, would say, hey, that's
That's different. That's not what we
That's not what we ran.
And, and I, and I think the other thing is, you know, in the context of an open public hearing, you know, you say, you go on the 26th, and you say, we're going to change this line. And, you know, you can keep that hearing open and continue it to the next week. You know, that's something where I think, you know, that, that's a change that's made in public. People have a chance to deliberate on it. People have a chance to comment on it. It's different than if you closed the hearing and then came back a week later with, you know, those types of changes. So I think, you know, doing things in the context of the open public hearing is a lot more, you've got a lot more, I think, ability to sort of make those changes, because that's the whole point of the public hearing.
So we would keep our public hearing open for a couple of weeks?
Well, Tim, remind me again, the date of the, when the warrant goes to print, when it goes to print.
Send it the 2nd or now?
I don't, I don't remember that one off the top of my head. I'd have to go upstairs and look at my piece of paper on my desk.
I didn't bring my notes on that. I thought
That was like the 22nd, because we were supposed to get our article to them by September 22nd, give them a month before it gets printed or the warrant's closed.
Was it the 22nd or the 26th of October?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah. It's the 22nd. We should, that's a problem. Well, I don't know if it's a problem, but we don't have our public hearing until after that.
It's gotta be the 26th.
I think it's, I think it was the 2nd, November 2nd.
Okay.
All right, we'll double check those dates. But either way, that would give us time to at least get a public, you know, a public hearing in on the
So let's say, let's just run that through. If we keep it open, so if we have the 26th, would we, I'm, I'm just thinking about how many meetings we need between now and town meeting, right? So would we schedule anything? Well, first of all, we wouldn't have the 23rd, which would be Thanksgiving. So we need a date for that here. So not that I which would be Thanksgiving, so we need a date for that here. So, not that I'm suggesting lots of meetings, but do we schedule them for the 2nd, 9th, and 16th of November?
I think we should schedule, and we can always cancel.
Totally.
Right, so that's my.
2nd, 9th, and 16th?
Yep.
November, okay. I agree. Okay.
And then not to beat a dead horse, but that determination is made by the town council?
The public, what?
With the public hearing, we close our public hearing, then, and then somebody makes a small change, and we, who determines?
We've, in the past, asked for town council's opinion on that.
Okay. And what's the turnaround on that, like a day or something?
Usually, well, you know, because otherwise it would be asked at town meeting, and town council probably would be asked on the floor. And so, you know, they would have to render an opinion then on the floor. So normally, when I, in other zoning, when we have it, we send it to town council for review before town meeting, for sure. And then there's been times when town council makes a few suggested edits.
Okay.
And then we have to review those. So as soon as we have it in a form that we, that it's ready, it should go to town council for review too.
Gotcha.
I mean, town council reviews the whole warrant anyway.
And I'm just wondering, yeah, no, I get it. I'm just wondering, process.
But we need to give the warrant committee time to review everything.
Okay, and Tim, are we doing another MBTA public forum in November?
Uh, yes. That, that one is, the timing of that, I wanna kind of make sure that whatever we have is like the thing that's gonna be either on the warrant or in front of town meeting. I don't, I don't want it to be like, you know, here's where we are, here's where we're going. I'd like it to be like, this is what it is.
Right.
You know, kind of, almost like a town meeting prep type kind of, you know, meeting.
Well, if that's the case, then you might be looking at the week after Thanksgiving, if it's just informational and not intended to.
Although then that is after the.
It's just before the town meeting.
It's just before town meeting, yeah. So like that Monday or Tuesday, the 27th or 28th?
Yeah, by then it's probably too late for the residents to weigh in.
That's what I, that's my concern.
So I feel like you're better off, it has to be, I think, before the warrant closes.
Yeah.
I mean, because, you know, as we said, we, there are people who are just finding out about this now, and.
So you just, even though you just had one, what about like the 30th of October? Bump up the November one.
And the warrant closes on the 2nd?
I would double check, but I thought it was.
I think that makes, I think that makes.
September 22nd is the warrant closing.
Yeah, that, yeah, but going to print, I think.
Oh, going, okay.
I think it makes sense. Monday, the 30th.
Oh, 11 to.
Monday, October 30th, Tim?
If we wanna do a form on the 30th.
Just so we can at least, so we have any opportunity for residents to. Okay. And again, we'll have to get that room.
One advantage too is not everyone can attend Thursday meetings or participate on a Thursday, so having another day that someone can make a comment is beneficial.
And it should be in person, because I feel like we had, you know, a lot of people reach out saying they were disappointed that the Council on Aging wasn't available in person, which I understand why, because of the paving issue, but I think it should be in person.
We will, we will try to get the Council on Aging, certainly. I mean, we, we, we try, we try for this one to be in person, and we have time in every way, so we'll work on that.
And is the high school auditorium ever available?
It's a tough get. We can, we can talk to the schools about that.
Okay. So that is a backup, I just was thinking, but council and aging is always nice to meet there, so. Okay. Great. All right, now Josh is back, so.
Good time.
Perfect timing.
Great. Thank you all for your flexibility. Let me share my screen now. Hopefully this will work. All right. Hopefully you're all seeing that, gotten through the technical hurdles. So as we were talking about for the community forum, the logistics, I was able to embolden the Monday, November 6th. It sounds like that's the date where we'll be meeting in East Milton at the Art Center. This will be an in-person event. We'll likely try to record our presentations so that we can share it out for those not able to attend. The, the approach, which we will amend a little bit to include the 3A discussion as well, but the idea would be, from our perspective, to explore also the potential zoning changes for East Milton Square, which will build upon the 3A zoning changes, and the, a discussion around the potential guidelines as well. And we'd be planning to have a few interactive exercises or interactive cellphone voting, polling, as a part of that feedback gathering from the community. We'll have to, as we think through the amended agenda, I think, need to think carefully about how far into feedback on the existing, or on the East Milton zoning work that we're undertaking, we will want to go in this meeting, or if it's more, just more, more at an informational level. The, the types of concepts that we need to explore, perhaps not necessarily in this meeting, but in a future meeting beyond, I think, the town meeting, are these types of issues which are pretty standard for a zoning exercise. But again, we'll, I think, need to think about how we want to adjust in, in line with what we've talked about just now. The initial analyses that were mentioned that the board would like to see, we have been working on. So this was the, the study area when we last presented it to you all, maybe two meetings ago now. And it was effectively confined to the business district, the current boundary. Looking in more detail at the, looking forward Barrett Report for East Milton Square, there was a contemplated expansion of the business district boundary. And so we have updated and expanded the study area accordingly. So that would be the, the darker orange and red and pink tones in this diagram here, which extend up across 93 and down Adams Street primarily, but also do include some of the additional areas along Mechanic Street, for example, and Church Street. So that would be the area that we're looking at here, and potentially be exploring that boundary with the community as well, and see if there's any merit for any additional areas for consideration, or if there's sort of very vocal pushback on these areas of expansion that were previously contemplated. So here's the zoning in its current configuration with the business district, but then also the surrounding residential. We've looked at the, the land use of those study area parcels, and the commercial concentration around East Milton Square itself, but the expanded areas are mostly municipal or institutional areas in some residential. And we can give a little more detail to this analysis as we presented at the forum. We've also looked at areas of public and private ownership, predominantly privately owned, but there are some public parcels which are either town-owned or the US Post Office. Looking at the study area you're built, and I think that's interesting, really a lot of older structures in the neighborhood and in the surrounding area. If you isolate those structures built within the last 20 years or so, it's really only 11 properties that have seen a structure built since 2001, which is, I think, interesting and shows, shows an area which is potentially ripe for the types of changes and the pressures that the East Milton Square area had been feeling in the recent years. Also looked at things like average lot size, which will help us, and mapping the lot sizes as we think about some of those zoning characteristics, building height as well, predominantly, I would say, two-story is probably the most predominant building height. Some of those institutional uses push up to three, three and a half stories. Currently nothing over four stories, but there are some approved projects that should add at least a single four-story structure. Looking at density as well, so FAR, a measure of floor area to land area, and the density there, I think this would correlate pretty strongly to the year built. So historically, we built things which were denser than we have due to contemporary parking ratios and their tendency to reduce that density. And we also like to look at building value to land value as a rough shorthand for redevelopment and the likelihood of change. And so where a, a building is more valuable than the land, that's a property which has seen investment of, of a kind which is less likely to invite redevelopment. But where the land value has outpaced the building value, or if there is no building present in some cases, those are properties which might be targeted or more likely to redevelop in the future, not necessarily in the next year or so, but, you know, over short, shorter term, five to 10 years. So given, and I just, as, I also moved this slide up just to kind of reframe too, given the adjustments. But I think, given that we do want to meet in November, we will continue with this analysis. We will continue with outreach to stakeholders between now and the November meeting, and, you know, touch base with any of those that would like to speak with us in a more one-on-one basis. And then I think what, the shorter order in terms of our next step will be, I'll reconvene probably with Tim and just talk through in a little more detail the agenda for the forum and how we weave into the presentation, the 3A informational, you know, the providing of 3A information and sort of up, status update on that work, and then also how deep we want to go with the East Milton work so that we give space for 3A discussion and don't create a confusing meeting setup.
That's great. Thank you, Josh. So I had a question, just going as far as information that we're feeding and providing for Josh. Josh, I don't know if you have, many of the historic buildings in East Milton Square have been surveyed for the Mass Historical Commission. Do you have copies of those inventory forms, just to understand, you know, significant architects that have worked on certain buildings? I know, for example, the Post Office is on a National Register list, you know, certain really significant properties. I would be happy to help provide those if you have not gotten those yet.
Would those be through the, the railway district?
Not necessarily. That's actually, some of those are outside the Railway Village.
Okay. I may not have some of them then. I have, I have the railway district specifically, but I don't think I have individual properties forms. If you have those readily available warrants, I could search for them, not knowing about them.
Yeah, okay. Terrific. Thank you. And any other important information that we feel like we want Josh to, you know, have as sort of, as he's interacting and preparing the information? I know you, you mentioned photographs of some of them, just giving context to.
Yeah, I guess one thing I would say to, is just to understand a little bit of the, the business district first-floor retail, because if we're doing a mixed-use overlay, what kind of mix of business we have? Or, I guess, just something, you know, in that analysis that you have, Josh, how do we learn more about sort of the business environment in that? And then the other thing I, to what I was getting to before with the photographs, is the architectural character, or, you know, what gives it the sense of place? So if you, you could talk about that a little bit, because I know like in the Barrett Report, you know, there was some talk about incorporating places, sort of pocket parks and things to, to provide more sense of place, and not just, you know, roads, because there's lots of roads that people are just moving through, and even crossing them is like, you know, a little challenging. So how do we make it feel more like a place and less like something next to a road? So if you can kind of get into the character aspect, I guess, of the district, is kind of what I was thinking. So it might be that there's missing character, characteristics, right? So because lots of people say we like it, you know, it's a village, but does it really feel like a village? Because people might have associations in their mind what a village feels like, and I don't think Granite Ave feels like a village characteristic to anyone, right? So how do you make it feel more like a village, right? And maybe it has to do with the public realm. So I don't know. Josh, that just feels like another level of information in the existing conditions analysis that would be helpful.
And maybe.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry. Maybe trying to tie in, like Milton Village with East Milton Railway Village, I might have mentioned before, so it's sort of bookends Adam Street. So they don't have to be exact, but it should have a similar feel to it.
Great, Josh. Thank you very much, so.
Quick question?
Oh, yes.
Just, how are you making out on outreach, Josh? Like, what feedback are you getting from neighbors?
Yeah, the, I would say the feedback has been good. I think I've reached, I'm at nine interviews now, and the, I would say, a range, from what I've gathered in the conversations, a range of perspectives and sort of backgrounds of residents and those involved with the East Milton Square Neighborhood Association, for example. I think all of them were involved in one way or another with the Barrett Report. I think there's an enthusiasm that this work is, is being picked up, and we're, you know, providing this next level of advancement in terms of zoning recommendations. I think there are, the, the main issues that came up in every conversation were around building height, parking, and traffic. Those were the three concerns that showed up very consistently. And I think we heard, I've heard a variety of opinions on, on the three of those, but I think those are the primary issues that we need to tackle in these conversations.
So I mentioned at the last meeting, Josh, to make sure you reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, and so I'm going to make that suggestion again, because I think it's really important constituency.
Yeah, and they have a meeting coming up.
Yeah, Tim connected me to the, the president to the Chamber of Commerce, and I need to follow up with him.
Great. That's good.
And Josh, have you reached out to everyone who was in that enlarged working group?
Yes. The, I think there was both the steering committee, which was a smaller group, and I've reached out and I think spoken to all but one of them. And then there was the larger working group, which I think was about 20 or so, and I've reached out to all of them. And I could do another round of just checking with those I haven't connected with yet to see if they want, want to speak as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, so the chamber is meeting on the 12th at Abbey Park at noon.
Great.
So it might be good just to even have them announce the forum, so that business owners and property owners who aren't all residents of the, of Milton, you know, could attend the forum to learn more about it.
And it probably could be a good, if you have time to attend, because on their agenda is discussion about the Halloween stroll. So they have a big Halloween stroll in the square.
So it'd be well-attended, you're thinking?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
And we'll, we'll prepare a, now that we have the date settled, a flyer for the event as well, which can be posted digitally and can also be printed and posted in the district itself.
Terrific. Good.
Cool.
Thank you. That was perfect.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah. Thanks for joining us. And Tim, is there anything you wanted to add?
Josh, we'll, we'll be in touch about kind of organizing this for November.
Sounds great. Thank you, Josh.
It's exciting. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So now we can move forward to our conversations on the MBTA Communities Update. Tim, if you want to say anything to begin, to start us off?
I mean, where do you want to go? There were no marching orders for UTIL at the end of the last meeting, but I did have a conversation with Meredith, and we did do a quick test of an alternative scenario, kind of just based on, and Meredith, I don't know if you want, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, no.
But just kind of synthesizing some of the remaining feedback, you know, I think primarily about some folks remaining kind of discomfort with the level of density on Granite Ave. And so the sort of, the test was, you know, what can we do to reduce that unit count? And, you know, because I think we're at a place where these districts are so lean that there's really no, there's no fat to cut. And so if you're going to cut, you've got to kind of put it somewhere. And so Meredith had asked if I could have UTIL take a look at bringing the Randolph Ave access road site kind of back into the mix. And it could, because what, you know, where we're at is, you know, we're right there on unit count, we're right there on density. And so, you know, reducing the density on Granite Ave kind of dips us below the overall density number, and it gets us closer than I think we should be comfortable with on the unit capacity number. And so you need to make those figures up somewhere. And so they were able to do a pretty quick run-through, and let me share my screen real quick, just so people can remember what we're talking about. This, this sub-district, can everyone see this?
Yes.
This subject, district, had kind of fallen out of favor for a bit, you know, after we had kind of, you know, gone through and realized that, you know, this, the Randolph Ave South District, the Brushell Road District, were really kind of more liabilities from an overall density perspective. And then I think, you know, we made a move a little bit more, you know, towards closer to the transit area and kind of try and figure that out. But, you know, without, you know, going too far into it, I mean, this one was probably the least unhelpful one, I think, which is why it was sort of the decision to sort of go back and check this one out. So let me, just kind of, we're not here, we looked at N last week, sorry. So this is what we would be looking at, you know, pretty much unchanged, you know, the scale of the map obviously doesn't have Randolph Ave, so you've got the little plus line there. So what we, and let me...
Yeah, it is Q, gotcha.
Hold on a second, how do I do this in view? Full screen. So this is option Q, right? So we had N and P, P didn't work. N was kind of the, you know, for lack of a better term, kind of final option, based on all the previous stated priorities that the board had. So what Q does is, and we'll see a comparison in the next slide, but what Q does is reduce the Granite Ave South District. I think it used to be at four and a half stories, now it will be four stories, you know, which has a unit capacity number that's slightly lower. And then it brings in that Randolph Ave access road site at the sort of previous parameters that we had tested. And this gets us to compliance. You know, you can see in the outputs, and, you know, unit capacity, model density, and acreage are the primary metrics that we're looking at. Acreage has never been a problem, we're never going to not get the acreage. The model density is kind of right where we need it to be, at 15.3, just kind of a shade above the minimum requirement. And we're at a little bit less than 300 units above on unit capacity. This is a comparison between kind of N, which was, you know, again, the sort of the final option from our last meeting with Q, and a kind of comparison to the existing estimated number of units in the district. And I think what you're seeing is the, the net new unit number is the one at the bottom. So this is kind of something that, you know, everyone has kind of been, you know, very interested in, what's the sort of net new units. And I think you can kind of see, like, pretty clearly that, you know, in the districts where there's actually already existing residential, transit area, triplex, you know, Blue Hills Parkway corridor, the difference between the existing and the modeled unit capacity is not nearly as great as some of these other districts where, you know, Randolph Ave, there's three houses there now, and then, you know, there would be another 193 units under these The parameters are what they are because we're so close on the model density. You know, 15.3, you could probably shave a handful of units off here and there, but this is largely going to be what it's going to look like. So maybe, you know, I don't know which one would make the biggest difference, you know, the units per acre at Randolph Ave is 27, maybe that's 25, and that gets you to 15% on the nose, or 15 units per acre on the nose, excuse me. But really, kind of, you know, this is, again, another really lean set of sub-districts because we're so close on the model density. One thing I just want to kind of flip back and forth, this was P, P was no good, so N, just to kind of show you, so this is, you know, you can look at the parameters, like I said, Granite Avenue South here was four and a half stories, 45 units per acre. So just kind of put a pin in that unit capacity number for South, which is 530 right now. Under the, under the new kind of, you know, reduced condition, we go from 530 to 471. So you're getting a 60-unit reduction on Granite Ave for 193-unit increase on Randolph Ave. So that's, and again, the point of this exercise was to try to reduce Granite Ave to the point that, you know, we could. And so that's, again, that's the extent of it. So like I said, 15.3 units per acre, you might be able to grab a handful of units, you know, somewhere, but more or less, this is what, you know, that would look like under these, under these conditions.
Is it possible to lower the Granite Ave South by 190 units? So this 471 comes down into the high 3s?
You would dip below 15 units per acre overall. That's, that would be the outcome there.
And the problem with doing 190 on Randolph Ave, there's already 140B coming on one side.
And then on the other side.
And then the other's 40. So...
But it's 40s. Yeah, that 40 would be...
The 40's part of this 190.
So net new would be 150 on that. And, you know, Randolph Ave is just, you know, it's the dangerous road in the town.
One thing before we, like, think about like a direction here, remember last week I mentioned, I think Jim, I was looking at you when I said this, is that, you know, 530 is like on a number, on a piece of paper, but when you really start looking at what a development program might be and other parameters that you put into place, you know, is that even an achievable number? So actually, I circulated some analysis I had did, that I did, and I wanted to have us think about it before we decide on a direction of this, because I think...
That's valuable information.
I think it's valuable. I spoke to two developers who do work in Milton, in preparing this, to look at what the unit mix might be and what the unit sizes might be. So I think it's probably a more realistic kind of development than you might get with just this kind of a numbers analysis. Because I didn't see that, really, I'm not quite sure on that Granite Ave South, how you get to the 530, honestly.
Yeah.
So I don't know if this is the right time to go through that, but I did want to make sure before we go too far down.
I think it is, I think it's worthwhile.
I'd love to hear, because I don't, unless I get it.
And I have some questions, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't favor at all a trade-off of 60 less on Granite Ave to add, you know, to have a 190 on Randolph Ave.
I was surprised that, yeah.
And there's no way to do it, huh?
Because we're so, we're so close on overall density that that reduction would just take us under.
God, that sucks.
So what I, Jim, or Tim, rather, can you go back to the first slide, just kind of put the context? So I've mentioned FAR before, and I talked about a volume.
So help me out there real quick, the higher the number, the more open space.
And you can explain it for the public too, to understand, because a lot of people don't understand.
Yeah, pretend I'm the public.
Well, and that's, that's why I spent some time trying to look at this. So floor area ratio is your square footage of your building total divided by your land area. And what it measures really is how much overall building you're going to be putting on a property on a square footage basis rather than a unit basis. And so it gets at the total size of the building in a different way, because you could say, I'm going to build 10 units. But if your 10 units are all one bedrooms, it's going to be smaller than if your 10 units are all three bedrooms, right? Because your amount per unit is going to be different. The other thing that's going to vary is your unit mix. So how many studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms, and how big each of those are. And that's really a function of the market. So like, that's why I said I talked to some developers who are building in Milton, because they know the Milton market, they know what the people are interested in. I've heard from both of them, people in Milton are more interested in two-bedroom units than in one-bedroom units, and it's different for condo than rental, so we can go through that. And then I analyzed, you know, some of what's been built and what, one that's approved and a 40B that's approved, just to give us the full range. So here on the left...
So the higher the FAR, the more building space, less open space?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, not necessarily open space, but it's...
So the way that I like to, I like to think about it is, if you think about a building that has an FAR of 1, okay? If you have a one-story building, that means zero lot line, right? Because the floor area is equal to the lot area. The same FAR of 1 could be in a two-story building, that now takes up half the site, because your floor area is now divided between two stories, and so on and so on and so on. So if the FAR is constant and the height goes up, the open space goes up. It gets a little more complicated when you go to .27 and 1.42.
Right, and the thing about, sometimes height can be perceived differently if it's set back further from the street. So sometimes you're better off having more height and getting more open space so that you have a greater buffer. So that's, that's where all of these things are important tools, and we haven't talked about this particular tool yet, which is something I've mentioned, I hope we could get to. So we haven't gotten to it with UTIL, so I decided to do it, to do some looking at this. So on the left, just so you can kind of picture, the building at Two Granite Ave, that office building, its FAR is .51, right? So that, if you said, I've forgotten how, forgotten how many acres that parcel is, four acres? And then, so like that FAR is stacked up into six floors, and that's why it's a small-ish footprint and a lot of parking around it. So that, when we're looking at what FAR we're going, what, how much square footage, that's what's there now. But then if you look at 36 Central, for example, that's an FAR of 1.42. And so you can see those others, there's a range here, 88 Warf at 1.5, 131 Elliott, which Tim said he was kind of a starting point for those higher transit districts at the ends, that FAR is 1.35. And then the bottom half of that list is what's been approved in the 40B projects. So in fact, 440 Granite Ave shouldn't be listed as 40B, sorry, that's a mistake. But it's at 3.07. Below that, the residence at East Milton Square is a 40B, and that's at 2.7. So you can see, like, the highest really, in all of these, is our 440 Granite Ave. And then if you look at, on the right, Granite Ave North, we said that in this compliance model, they use 1,000 square feet per unit on average, right? So I said, okay, and that gave us 171 units. So I did that as 171 times 1,000 is 171,000 square feet, and I divided it by the lot area, and it comes up to an FAR of .9. And then I did the same thing for Granite Ave South, and it comes up to 1.03. So they're approximately FAR of 1, based on that. Now, if you go to the next slide, Tim. These two development scenarios, I mentioned I spoke to developers, and that's what these are. So the one on the left is a condominium, and this developer suggested that he would do 65% two-bedroom units and 35% one-bedroom units. And the average two-bedroom unit would be 1,200 square feet, and the average one-bedroom unit would be 700 square feet. And he said 700 because that's an entry-level price point that somebody can afford as an entry-level unit. And I asked him about, okay, this is just the inside of a unit, what does he calculate for corridors, common areas, you know, you're going to have potentially a small gym, you know, there's certain things that go into a building besides just the unit. So that gross to net, net-to-gross factor of 1.25 gives you an average. So you can see then, below that, I said, okay, for every two, two-bedroom, there's one, one bed, and I came up with an average unit gross square footage of 1,292. So now we're higher than the 1,000 that's in the model. So then we just do the math. If we set the FAR based on the model at that, we come up with 132 units instead of 171 per the model, and we come up with 410 instead of 530. That's okay. Now, you know, if we had commercial space in here, then you'd have, some of that square footage would go to the commercials, so you would have less units, because your overall square footage doesn't get any bigger, right? So in the scenario on the right, in the rental, you can see it's a little different scenario in that the two bedrooms are a little bit smaller, but the one bedroom was, is bigger. And I did the same kind of calculation there with the net to gross. And then this developer said, in Milton, 85% two beds and 15% one beds is...
Interesting.
Yeah, and so the math then, for that averages out to 1,382. And again, you keep those square footages fixed, and you come up with 124 units as compared to 171, and 384 as compared to 530. So you can see it kind of, there was quite a bit of range there, depending upon what kind of development, this purely residential point of view, but still, less than the model is indicating. Now, if you go to the next one, Tim? Okay, now I looked at 440 Granite Ave, which had the highest FAR, right? And then the residence at East Milton Square, which has a high FAR as well. And the, I have a mistake on this top here, what happened? It's not 42 residential units, it's 24. Little math mistake, sorry about that.
It's okay.
But the 22, two beds, and the two one-beds are correct. And the average square feet per unit in that scenario is higher, at 1,927. And then there's 8% of the total gross floor area, 8% of that floor area is commercial. So I did the math again, of the 171,000 times 8%, and you would have 13,680 square feet of commercial area. You would take that away from the 171, and come up with 157,320 square feet available for residential, divide that by the 1,927 average per unit, and come up with 82 units instead of, as compared to the 171 in the compliance model. Same kind of calculation for the Granite Ave South, and you come up with 253 as compared to 530. So if, if we use the program that was used at the highest FAR density that we have approved in Milton thus far, where we have larger units, you can see that we're at half the number of units, as the compliance model is showing us. Similarly, if you look... Similarly, if you look, then, at something which has very small units, which is what I noticed in the residence at East Milton Square, you can see that those...
They're small.
Units are small. And so in this case, you're getting closer to what the compliance model shows, but you're still less with very small units. You're still less than the 171 and the 530. If you go to the next slide, Tim? Then I looked at 36 Central and 131 Elliott. 36 Central has 18 units total. 16 of them are two beds, and two are one. So you can see, these ratios are about what the developers were saying. Lots more twos than ones. And here, at 36 Central, the average gross square footage per unit is 1,583. Then they had 12% of their gross floor area is commercial, so pretty much the first floor. And so if you use that same kind of ratio, again, at the Grand Ave North, at the 171,000 square feet, 12%, you'd have 20,520 square feet of commercial. And then I just put some reference down below, that the Milton Marketplace Fruit Center commercial building is 36,470. And then 36 Central and 131 Elliott both have about 4,000 square feet of commercial. So we're talking about commercial, it's nice to have a reference point, I think. So then, continuing the math here, you take that amount of commercial off the 171, and you're left with 150,480 square feet. And you divide that by the average unit, and you get 95 as compared to 171. Do the same on the Grand Ave South, and you come up with 295 units as compared to the compliance model of 530. So, we look again at 131 Elliott, which is kind of where we were, Tim's model, if you will. Again, 38 units, 32 of those are two beds, and six are one beds, with an average per unit across those of 1,452. Six and a half percent of the commercial space, or six and a half percent of the floor area is commercial, which comes out to 11,115 on the Grand Ave North site. And you come up with 110 units there as compared to 171. And on the Grand Ave South, 341 as compared to the 530. Now, if you didn't have commercial, you'd, you'd have, you know, that, you'd have more units than those. But I, I thought, for my ability to understand these numbers, it was important to kind of understand it in the context of what we already know, or what we already have. And then also, to show the importance of putting the FAR number into our zoning, because we don't have it in these models so far.
Right. And that's a question of how far can we push the FAR number, you know, to make it a viable, or to be considered HLC? But this is what a standard is in Milton.
I just used what we are, what they gave us in that compliance model as the FAR. What I'm showing you is that you'd have to have a lot of really small units to ever get to that number that the compliance model is showing you. And we have developers and developments in Milton that are showing us that that's not what's getting built here. So that, I'd say, if we put the FAR number in there, just think about it, how much bigger, how much more square footage we would get if these, if we didn't put FAR in and we left everything else? Because we would get 530 units at much larger average square footage.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for this. That was a good, really good exercise, I think.
Did you go to work this week?
Don't talk to my business partner.
I've already thought about that, I wouldn't.
So I think one thing, and this all, this all is great and strikes me as true. The one thing that I would, want to just make sure we figure out is, you know, the reason, so the metrics that go into the compliance model kind of are all different, but kind of overlap in their function. And so like, the combination of height, maximums per acre, minimum open space, kind of function as an FAR limit. So what I would want to make sure, and we can talk to you, Teal, about this, if this is the direction we want to go in, is if adding an FAR limit now kind of depresses our numbers in a way that would not work. And then, and it all, it's just a matter of kind of preference in terms of how you want to run your zoning. Because, you know, again, that combination of height, unit count, setbacks, minimum open space, kind of is a backdoor to FAR. But FAR is just, it just does the thing. So it may be a situation where we may need to drop another one of those parameters, if it means that, because, I mean, ultimately, and what Cheryl's doing is, is really important, because, you know, we've been in this model, and we've been talking about these numbers for so long. I don't want to say that the, the numbers are fake, but like, I use the term academic. Like, they reflect a series of assumptions that are kind of meant to apply across the region, that maybe will not actually, and probably will not actually play out as a practical matter in real life. And again, that kind of underscores the notion that what we're being asked to do is to zone for something that kind of hits these metrics. Whatever happens, then happens. I think on the, on the other end of the spectrum, which we're not really talking about here, because it's a little bit less important, on a, on a kind of smaller lot situation, but in the triplex area, there's a whole other set of constraints that are going to depress the number of units that actually get produced, compared to what comes out of the model. So the model says, you have 480, you know, net new units in the triplex area. But, you know, this is a situation where you're talking about kind of market conditions, and kind of what sells in Milton, what doesn't. On the triplex end, it's, you've got an individual homeowner, not a developer, just a guy or a woman, or a couple, or whoever owns a house. Do they want to make the commitment to, to a means-of-he-gress sprinklers, or do they just want to add one more unit to their house and be done with it? And so, in a situation like that, where it's much easier to do the one thing than the most thing, you're going to wind up with less units than show up in the model. So there's a lot of practical implications that just get kind of wiped away when we're working in the model. And so I think it's really important to look at it this way. But we'll want to make sure that we kind of, you know, we plug that in, and we test it, and we see what the implications are. You know, because again, predicting, or trying to predict what will happen as a practical matter is probably more important than, you know, the model needs to show the numbers, but we need to have things in the model that we think are going to have a practical effect that we want to see.
So my concern with these numbers, though, of these examples you provided, they were all by special permit.
Except 140B, yeah.
Yeah. So, they went through the process of, you know, being limited. When you take away the special permit process, I'm not sure if these, this modeling would actually be applied in the real world.
Well, the, I do think the other tools that are in the zoning and in the design guidelines and the design standards, which I also spent some time looking at and thinking about, you're only going to be, developers are only going to build what they think will be a successful project, right? And that's how they arrive at their mix, right? So like, what works in Milton won't be what works in another community, because their market might be different. You know, so what's desirable, let's say, in Stoughton, or Canton, or Braintree, or Quincy, or Boston, you know, it's all very much what they market in those locations are. So, I think that whether they're special permit or 40B, you know, the zoning for 131 Elliott went through a very long process. It went to town meeting. And it was based on, basically, this, what got built. So people knew, you know, what their potential was in that zoning. Here, what we're showing is that there's a range of what could happen in the, in this zoning, right? So the range, you know, at the level of what the compliance model is, is higher than even what the residence at East Milton Square is. And for me, looking at those units, we design multifamily residential for clients, mostly in Boston, and we don't design two-bedroom units at 900 square feet. Our clients find that too small. So everything in the East Milton, from my experience, is really small. So what it tells me is, yes, we see this range, and we see what this cap could be, but, you know, you have to have, it'll be really interesting to see those, you know, the 92 units in, in East Milton, how, what that market is, you know, for that size unit in that building, once they build it, or if they build it. But I don't see the process of approval as being the driver for what's going to make it something that we think could be like this. I think we put enough standards in, and you put the zoning parameters in.
So I disagree, because that's why we have these 40Bs, because they can circumvent the process.
No, because we don't have multifamily zoning that you can do it under. So that's why they went that route. The whole idea is that you would have multifamily that you could do here, and you're putting not too many controls that it won't pass muster, but enough controls, like, if you look at the, what I put into the standards, which I have a question for Tim, whether he thinks they're too stringent, but under site plan review, it allows you to review many of the design things that we review currently for special permits. The difference is that you're not going to be able to say no, because it's as of right, but you can still guide that development. And so then you have to say to yourself, what's important enough to put in there that you want to guide it towards, right?
Yeah. You know, just to, just want to throw something out, in the interest of managing our time tonight, that was very valuable. You've proven that it makes better sense for us to manage the guidelines, rather than to explore adding up on Randolph Ave to try to diminish, you know, the number on Grand Ave. So, I mean, there's going to be a lot of work involved to be able to do that, but how should we use our time tonight?
I would like to run through the edits that I did to, whether you like it, the fact that it's a select board article. I asked Tim, I said, I want to take a crack at putting something into a document. And Tim suggested I use the last one that was approved by the select board. And that's what I did. And it's, it's not a final document, but I wanted to go through because I wanted to discuss the things that I think, regardless of the final boundary, I thought, were still things we would put in there. So if you, if you all agree...
Can you pull it up as a redline version?
I think so. Tim can pull that up, right?
Do you think having that much commercial will bump us into our compliance?
I just did that as a program analysis. I think, actually, one developer that I spoke to, I asked particularly about this site, and he said he would make it a mixed-use site.
We can't mandate it, can't mandate it there. But if they want to, if a developer wants to come in...
And then, and then it becomes just a matter of like, we say that you can build this many units, but also, we say you can only have a four-story building, so it's up to you to decide what that first story is.
Do we have to, do we have to put that into the, or, put that into the zoning that they're permitted? Or is that an automatic?
No.
It has to be each sub-district?
That use is in, that use is in everything right now, except for the transit area, triplex. Everything right now, I think, allows for mixed use. So Grand Ave, Milton, Central, East Milton, obviously.
So when we put the FAR requirement in, what we're doing is, if you put more commercial, it means you're building less units, right? So you're not getting any more square footage, because the way it is now, there's no control on that. Right? So, at least I didn't see it. So, so if we just, I don't know how much anybody, I didn't want to necessarily go through every line except my edits, but we can go through, like, these are the purpose. Tim?
Can you enlarge that?
Yeah. I think we should go to your edits. I've gone through this, but your edits would be more helpful.
Okay. All right, so then we would go right to definitions. I added design guidelines, because the, the model zoning allows us to do that. And, and then I added definitions for floor area ratio, FAR. Height in feet, and height in stories, because we run into this elsewhere in Milton when you're measuring height. It's, so here, so in that, in order to not always just have a flat roof, if you say that you're measuring it to the midpoint of a sloped roof, you're more likely to get a sloped roof. And so that's there. And then, this notion of a basement is really something that came up, like, on the Hendries, because half of its lower level is exposed on Central, but it's buried on Elliott. So it's good to have a definition, so that you don't end up with an additional story when you're not anticipating it. And then...
One thing about design guidelines, and I'm going to ask, because I've got my screen up, I'm going to ask Josh if he can, if he can do this. The sample bylaw has like, a sort of a commentary section on design guidelines, and I think they have proposed language for definition, which we may want to take a look at, because it also kind of articulates that the design guidelines can exist in a separate document to be approved or updated by the planning board.
I took that exact paragraph and put it in later.
Okay.
But I didn't think it really fit for a definition.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
My understanding is, though, it has to be approved by HLC. Any of our, anything, any changes to our zoning has to be reviewed and accepted by HLC. So if we wanted, you know, you know, certain specific things, I would love for us to get as much into...
I have a lot, I think I put in here, maybe there's more that we could do, we could keep going. I just put in a definition of lot and of lot coverage. I talked about that before, because the, you, Teal, is now using 60% lot coverage, but we didn't, and that includes the parking, but we didn't have it as a definition, right?
The way that we got around that was, we included the town's, our existing definition of open space. And then, rather than, because the model uses building coverage plus parking, but the zoning parameter is minimum open space. So the minimum open space is just the inverse of the lot coverage and parking.
So maybe we don't need this. We can pin that, Tim?
Yep.
Then going to the transit sub-district 3, paragraph 3. Wait for you. I just have the question there, and I made this edit, because we talked about how three units on a lot doesn't necessarily mean it's multifamily, if you have two, if you have three single families on a single lot, right? So I thought we needed to be more explicit here.
And just where we are, well, we're not anywhere, but, option 1N, 10,000 square feet is out.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, this all needs to...
That needs to be updated per that, but I didn't...
And the four units with two, two buildings, those...
I mean, if you want, I mean, like, we can just do it now. I just didn't...
Well, it's not up to us, it's up to the select board to amend. So we could amend their document.
We can make a proposal, too. So like, if you want, there's other things that...
So when you say "we," you mean the planning board right now will make a proposal to the select board?
If we all decide. I mean, otherwise, I probably will submit myself if we don't decide, but I'll probably submit some of these as a comment to the select board. But what I understood from Tim was that Tim was going to, I mean, this keeps, they keep changing it based on the mapping, right? So I didn't, I didn't change this based on mapping, because I thought Tim was going to be changing based on mapping. So if we can just continue on my comments, I added in the paragraph 5 on the table of dimensional standards, a floor area ratio of 0.5. And I did that kind of, when I looked at those analyses that I did before of existing conditions in that kind of transit area. A three-story on Avalon was like, a .56 FAR. Some two families were like, in .4s. So it seemed to me, a .5 was a reasonable floor area ratio. So if you said you have a 7,500 square foot lot, you would be able to have half of that as your total square footage, with that 3,000 and...
Do accessory buildings count in that FAR? Like, if you had a two-car garage or something?
Yeah.
They do.
They should.
So if you did... So, if you did, so your total square footage that you'd be able to build would be 3,750. I mean, there's houses that are bigger than that, single families, that are a lot bigger than that. And if you said that's three units, that's 1,250 square feet per unit. So, that's what you'd be able to do in the transit area, with you put this FAR limit in at .5, if you have a 7,500 square foot lot.
My first apartment on School Street was a two-bed at 850. It was comfortable, though. My wife and I lived, actually, my second floor tenant lived there with no problem, her and her daughter.
So, that's the FAR I plugged in there, just so that we can just keep going. The next district is the Milton Central. Now, this obviously has, has some sub-districts in it now, which would need to get looked at, but I, the, these areas at the end, an FAR of 1.0. So, if we look back to the Hendrys, the Hendrys at 131 Elliott, it's 1.35. So, again, though, this 1.0, it's, it's a little bit harder to analyze in the, than the Granite Ave, because it's, Granite Ave is just one, one lot. But I think that, that FAR, it probably should work.
And you would, and you would do that across the six-story and four-story?
No, I think we have to look at that a little bit more. I just, I think, I do think, so you can pin that to Tim there, because I didn't have those sub-districts in here.
Does that change when, if, I should say, properties are merged?
So, FAR?
Yeah, yeah.
The FAR, then, you know, it goes up, obviously. So, if you have a bigger piece of property, you can build more.
Yeah, so that was, I think someone asked that question the other night, about lot assemblage. I didn't, if I recall, Zoe said that the compliance model does not take into account lot assemblage.
Right.
So, if we start with a 7,500 square foot lot, and then, you know, someone buys another 75, and then another 75-
But if they combine them, they can always still build three units.
Yeah, you can only be, yeah, we have that, we have that constraint there, too. So, there, there's no incentive to combine multiple 7,500 square foot lots. You would want to have them as square lots.
Or if they get a 10 and a 5 and put them together.
You still only can build three units, though.
They get a 10 and a 5, and then split them and make two 7,500s, right? Play with the law lines?
And then come with, come to us with an A&R plan.
Would that qualify for an A&R?
If you've got frontage.
It would, huh?
Yeah.
It's a danger, but it's not like a deal breaker, but it's-
Yeah, but that is likely to happen.
Oh, no, it is, 100%. Just a question of how many times can it happen on Elliott Street, or wherever? I mean, that's the real danger in all this.
I think, I think on Elliott Street, I mean, this is all speculation, obviously, but, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of the undersized lots, you know, are between five and six, you know, thousand square feet. And again, until you get up to 15,000 square feet, you're still only talking about three units. So, like, now you're going to buy three, you know, Elliott Street lots at 3/4 of a million bucks?
If you can go to 15, that's, that would happen.
Okay, good luck. I mean, we, so I, I think, I don't want to dismiss it, because, I mean, it is, and it's something that is kind of, you know, it just doesn't take into account. The model doesn't take into account, it doesn't take account subdivision either. Less of, less of an issue in the transit area, because there's not a lot of 15,000 square foot lots. But also, you know, in, in the same way that, you know, Cheryl's kind of talking about, you know, what is the real estate development kind of reality here, there's another kind of real estate development reality, where, I mean, you know, Jim, I, you know, you're, you're in the biz, so I'm not going to discount, you know, your opinion, but also, it's, it's, it seems like a lot of effort and money for not a lot of payoff, but-
I mean, that's today, perhaps?
Yeah, no, I mean-
I mean, we don't know a 5, 10, 15. So, this effort, you know, zoning is like a 100-year process. So, we're looking to the future.
Doesn't have to be.
And we don't, we, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what the conditions are going to be, so-
We do know, though, that the zoning that was put in place in 1928, which allows for, what Tim has said, is like some 60,000 housing units we have, some less than 10,000 housing units.
60,000 people.
People, or you, sorry?
Yeah.
I thought that zoning put a moratorium on multifamilies. In '38, that was it, right?
But the point is, there's lots of parcels that could still be subdivided into something smaller. There's parcels that are over 7,500 square feet. People haven't chosen to do it. I guess the thing is, will people choose to, to do it? I'd like to finish running through this.
Yeah, I mean, you see it's happening all over town. So, it is happening. You know, you see buildings up.
The other thing that you have happening in places like your neighborhood, is people buying a house, tearing it down, and putting up like a 20,000 square foot, because we have no FAR requirements in our zoning.
Yep.
So, you can still have one unit, and it can be 3,000 square feet, or it could be 20,000 square feet, or whatever somebody wants to build.
Yeah.
So, that, there's nothing that our zoning-
I know, and we're in a historic district, and there's-
Those folks down the block with the indoor pool?
Yeah, that's 20,000.
Side visit?
28,000, yeah.
Yeah. So, so something that changes character of neighborhoods, I mean, that, that's something. So, do you mind if we keep running through this?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, so, I just thought, on something large, larger, these larger development sites, that we should plan for electric vehicle parking and car-share parking?
So, so-
You can look at these numbers, Tim.
So, this is, there's, there's, there's an element here, and, and this is something I'll want to check in with, because it's a little bit tricky. One of, one of the things that the guidelines are pretty explicit about is, you can't hold your 3A district to standards that you don't hold your normal zoning districts to. And so, like, we don't have electric vehicle or car-share parking requirements in our other zoning districts.
We don't have it in the Milton Village overlay for electric?
It's not, it's not, it's not consistent across town.
Yeah.
But also-
440, yeah.
But also, we don't also, we don't have multifamily zoning, like, so it's like, so it's one of those issues where, I mean, what, the example that they use is, like, green building standards. So, like, if you don't have, like, a solar requirement for a single-family house, you can't have a solar requirement for a multifamily building.
Yeah, but isn't this whole initiative is to cut down traffic and, you know, increase climate resistance?
And I think there's, there's the, there's the line item that talks about exceptions, and this is, this would, I think, fall under the category of-
I would like to try it. I'd rather have them say that this, you can't do it than to take it out.
Yeah, when we see the exceptions, I think this would fall under that category.
That's related to height and solar-
With solar panels, right? I remember reading that.
So, that's again, no, no, that's fine. That's, so, and we, we have something like that in our, our existing zoning, basically, where you have a solar array on your house, it doesn't count towards your height. So, I, I mean, I, I think I tend to agree with Cheryl, especially if, if we're going to have the opportunity to try to get, like, a sort of a pre-review, you know, let them tell us we can't do that. But also, then it becomes a question of, you know, maybe we want to just do this townwide. You know, I don't know.
I think if we have, like, these multifamily or larger commercial, we should be. I mean, we've been requiring it in projects that we permit, so-
I mean, as the building get larger, gets larger, shouldn't we push towards net neutral?
So, that's it, that's, I think, what Tim's getting at in terms of-
Well, and, and so, and then the broader question, that has nothing to do with MBTA communities, but do we want to opt-in to the new stretch code?
We're in it, right? We're in that.
We're in this, we're in the stretch code now. There is a new, more stretchier stretch code that you can then opt into. It's not net zero, but it's close to net zero. So, that's something the town meeting will have to talk about at some point.
But the problem with that is it increases the cost. So, even if you were doing, I think, 1,000 square foot addition, you have to do it, don't you want your whole entire house?
Oh, I think we're there now. That's second phase of the stretch code. Maggie, that's in place for the current stretch code.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, for the multifamilies, it basically would require passive house level of construction, but because it's becoming more prevalent, just like when, when building codes, when it becomes more prevalent, the costs start to go down, because it's just become standard practice. And that's where it will be, there's grant money that's available. But, that's another topic.
Yeah.
I think, if we want to stay on target?
We do, yeah.
Shaun's looking, we're like, we're going to look at this time.
I just was going to ask, because in this transit area, if, things like a loading zone, are you, is that under our site plan, that we would be able to ensure proper loading zones in a commercial area?
I mean, so, yes, in, in the site plan procedures that are in the zoning, we should, and we can, and we have language in that, in our existing site plan review. If it's, if there's not something already in there, we can just mirror that language in this. But we should be explicit in the zoning about that sort of thing. And that's 100% in bounds for site plan review.
Okay. So, I would like to think about those tiered, not tiered, but I guess, it's sort of tiered, the two, the Matapan and the Milton Central, we're having four stories and six stories. I would like to look at the F, think about that FAR a little bit more, but right now, it's in here, it's 1.0. And then, if we go to the Granite Ave on the dimensional standards, I really, when thinking about that, was, I'm thinking that the setback from the street should be more than 20 feet. Is that where we were next, though?
Yeah, 20 feet is nothing. I mean, I had to build a fence 30 feet in.
Yeah, so I, I changed it from 20 to 30 on the Granite Ave. Tim, so I don't know if you're there.
That's where, that's where we are.
Yeah, and then, I put the floor area ratio at 1.0. And we went through that whole thing before, about how I arrived at that. And then, the same vehicle parking, I didn't, East Milton Square, I put the FAR at 0.5, just to continue along the path of keeping it less desirable than what the overlay would be. And put the parking requirements there, too. Now, we get to the general development standards.
So, just, and, and just, the, again, the 1N option also has that Blue Hills Parkway corridor, but I think, I think the, the theory there is, a lot of those dimensional parameters will just mirror the transit area.
I was thinking it would be FAR .5 there as well.
Yeah, okay.
Then, on these, on development standards, I think that all projects should have standards, not just the, the larger district ones, and that they all should be subject to site plan review. So, I've made that here, and then it's later as well. Then, under vehicul-
Every three-family house, public hearing with the planning board.
Well, we can think about that, but I know, like, neighbors-
Pardon me, I didn't hear what you said, Tim.
So, so, and, and, and again, this is, this is something 100% up for grabs in terms of debate. When I had gone through and kind of just sort of populated the sample bylaw, I, I kind of set a limit at projects with 10 or more units, subject to site plan review, which would effectively just kind of exempt the, because the only other type, there's, there's no eight-unit development in the zoning, it's three or more than 10. So, that would have taken the transit area projects out of site plan review. But again, you know, did that with the flag of, you know, planning board should definitely talk about this and decide what it wants to do.
Yeah, I mean, I felt as if it would give some protections to residents in that district to know that they're going to have, that that project would, would get a level of review outside of just the building department. So, while it may seem like it's burdensome to some, I think it, it would offer comfort to others.
I agree. I would want site plan on-
Because it could, it still could be built, but having it be better, you know, maybe there's some consideration that comes through that hearing, like, maybe there's a fence or some landscape buffer, or you can orient something a little, the parking, a little differently, like, just like we were speaking about with the bench, you can orient that parking. That's not saying that they can't put parking there, but it, the impact to that particular neighbor could be that, you know, significantly different, just by that design change. So, that's why I feel as if it's, it's important.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
Okay, so, on vehicular access, I, I thought that we should put in minimum driveway dimensions, so that we don't get these really wide driveways.
Maximum.
I mean, maximum.
I'm sorry, maximum. I would completely agree. I think anyone who's been following the conversation on on-street parking in Milton, which has been a, a conversation, is, people have said, "Well, we just widened our driveway, so if you can't get your cars around each other." And it also goes to the evidence that people do drive in multifamily housing in Milton for-
And I would suggest that they would not be able to apply for an overnight parking pass, because you can-
You mean a hardship pass?
A hardship pass, because it's not a hardship.
Well, they have, you would have to be able to fit the three parking spaces onto the parcel in order to get your permit. So, it, it's not whether there's a hardship or not.
But if they end up having four cars, then they apply to the police department for a hardship.
So, this is, and, and it's an interesting thing, and we had this conversation at the Traffic Commission at the most recent meeting. There, there may be a kind of broader kind of thinking about on-street parking in town kind of going on, but this is another example of something that, if it's not in your normal A, B, and C zoning, you can't do it. But that being said, outside of this, I think it's definitely worthwhile, and especially if we're going to be corresponding with the select board about policies around the zoning, I think definitely giving direction to the police department about how they decide what a hardship is versus what a hardship is not. You know, I think about this in terms of, you know, 440 Granite Ave, where like, it's not one per unit. So, like, what if someone that moves into 440 Granite Ave comes and says, "Hey, I don't have a parking space in my building." Is the police department going to give them the hardship permit or not? I would contend that they shouldn't, based on the conversation that we've all had here. But that's going to have to be a matter of policy, as opposed to something that goes into zoning, because, again, that's something where we would need to do that for everybody, you know, based on what the parking ratio is in, in the overall zoning. But I think it's definitely, the spirit of what we're doing could very well be undercut if they're giving out hardship permits like crazy. So, we'll want to put a-
So, is the conversation, I don't want to derail, is to get rid of the overnight parking restriction, because I hope that's not the conversation.
Yeah, I, one of the, it's, I mean, a lot of it is, is, you know, in, in, on the west side of town, people are having a hard time getting flagged constantly. So, it's not necessarily getting rid of overnight, like, no overnight parking, but how do we have a little bit more justice around it?
Well, the justice is, it, no one can park on the street overnight.
I, I, it's, and it's unflinching in its strictness, and I, I, I have feelings on that, but, you know, people that are trying to-
Because I lived on that side of town, and I did get ticketed and-
Well, we always look back to Brookline and how great Brookline is. Brookline has no overnight parking. It's, keeps the town somewhat contained with the cars.
Like a town. Keeps it like a town.
Yeah, exactly.
Not a city.
Biggest town in the state or something. Not a city.
So, I think the, I, I, we haven't talked about anything besides, we should start thinking about this a little bit more, because there, there are a lot of calls coming in from, from some of those streets, but also, I mean, to your point, and, and I've always felt very strongly that, you know, I'm not, I, I don't want people to have more cars than they need, and it's like, can't park on the street, so where are you going to put your car? You won't have one. But if we're giving out hardship permits, then kind of undercuts that.
Well, it definitely, it definitely plays into the development potential. If it gets too, if it gets too restrictive, it won't be built.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, the premise that everybody that lives on Elliott Street, or in that neighborhood, takes the transit, is based on the premise that they work in Boston. You know, the reality of it is that most of those people that live over there do not work in Boston. So, the transit is of no value to them. So, you know, if the, if the zoning is such that it just drives everybody towards being a, you know, a transit person, it's harder for the developer, you know, to develop and build something that's going to be marketable. That's just the reality of it, you know? I mean-
Yeah, I mean, if they-
If you drive in, you know, if, I'm a guy who works outside of this, works outside of Milton, and I do not work in the city, and I never have, I, you know, if the property didn't allow me to have a vehicle, I, I'm not a buyer.
Right.
I can't live there. I can't live there. I can't rent it.
Yeah, it's interesting you said that, because I talked to a friend, and she said the exact same thing. She said, you know, it'd be interesting to know how many people in Milton actually work in downtown Boston.
Yeah.
Because that's shifting.
Employees, you know, shoot, Tim doesn't take the transit here. I don't even know if you could take the transit here. Maybe you could, but it'd be, it'd be, it's faster on your bike.
It is much faster on your bike.
But anyhow, without, I'm just, that's my only concern. If you, if we create it and make it so restrictive, a developer's going to say, you know, I can't market something, so I'm not going to do it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that the maximum driveway width, yeah.
But we're saying that we can put three vehicles.
If you can't, then you can't develop under the zoning.
Right.
I mean, I, I think that's the way it needs to be, because not all parcels are going to be suited for it. And, you know, there are properties, like, if you go along Elliott, where, like, it's all paved around the building, and I think people don't want that.
Right.
So I think we have to put the, the protections in, so that this can happen where it makes sense.
Right.
I guess I'm misunderstanding. So is it 12 feet all the way down, or 12 feet that opens up to three spots?
It can open up to three spots. I mean, it's the driveway that you're coming in. So in other words, you're not just going to have a really wide driveway, which allows you to park three cars and back out into-
But if you have that 7,500 square foot house, or a 10,000, and you put three cars on it, can you do a dogleg driver, where you come down 12 feet, and then you turn, and you have one, two, three spots, 12, 12, 12?
Well, and you could have it come in and then widen, so you have three spots on the side.
So three spots at 36 with a 12?
It's just the fact that you don't want the, something, somebody to be saying that they can just park in the front, because they have a wide driveway, you know?
So this is just a 12-foot curb cut?
Yeah. Yeah. And then that would get reviewed at site plan review.
And a minimum lot coverage?
Yeah, we have a lot of coverage, too.
Lot coverage, would it be included in the parking?
And we also have no parking in the front setback?
Well, we have it, elsewhere I look at that, we have it no more than 40%. It's like, otherwise in the zoning that you can't park, that'd be paved, right?
Max driveway width is 12 feet.
So if it's grass, you can still park?
So what is a driveway versus this?
So the transit area, because it's a three-unit max, a 12-foot drive, wide driveway would be standard. Whereas if you need two-way traffic, like in a larger parking lot, you pretty much need 12 feet. I mean, you can narrow it a little bit, but that's the idea behind these maximums. I mean, we're seeing it in our work, that the, I mean, the city of Boston, where we mostly do our work, wants to narrow these things up. They're asking us for even, to go narrower than these.
Oh, no, I get the 12, but as it's written, does it limit it to 12 all the way down the, once again, can you do that dogleg that I described with that specific wording?
I think what you say is, your driveway is this, and your parking is this. So-
Does it say that here somewhere, or am I missing it? Right?
I think, I was leaving it-
This reaches to me that you can only have a 12-foot driveway no matter what. You can have it 1,000 feet long, but it can only be 12 feet. Right? So, I, I don't, I'm not-
You could say, okay, 12 feet max driveway-
To access three cars or something.
To access parking space.
I mean, do you want to keep it 12 feet, again, 12 feet within the front setback, and then?
Yeah, I could do it that way. I just didn't want the whole side drive setback being paved either, because I think, when you look at that-
But you couldn't say 12 feet in the front setback, because what if 12 feet exceeded the 40%?
Right, so they wouldn't be able, they still would be limited.
Well, I mean, it's the maximum, so you can always do less than 12 feet to, to get to that.
I'm thinking along the lines of your paved driveway. Do you have any stormwater management in here?
We, do I? Well, it's covered in here, yeah.
It is covered.
Yeah, it, it refers to stormwater regs later on here. Well, you can pin this for further discussion, if you'd like, you know, to address your concern, Jim. Right?
I think so.
Okay.
12 years from now, when you're still on the planning board, you can be applying these when you're doing site plan review.
Or when I'm the guy sitting over there, looking for approvals for the zoning that's never going to get built.
You could be in that position, too. That's true.
I can leave you mad.
So, open space, that, you spoke about this, Tim, but I, I think that courtyards, patios, decks, play areas could be added to what could be considered open space. And I, I added-
See, I kind of disagree with that. I think, to me, traditional open space is green space. And if we're trying, this is one of the, again, we go back to what is the, the reason for the zoning. It's to, you know, help with climate change. And so helping with climate change is decreasing our impervious surfaces and increasing our green. So I don't think a courtyard should be considered open space.
What I was looking at, it's open to the air, and people can recreate in these spaces. I think if you take them out, you're not likely to see these things being included in some of these developments.
I just, I just went back up to, because the, the definition that we have in, of open space is, is the cut-and-paste definition that's in the existing zoning. And so this is, you know, again, in a subdivision that you could build tomorrow. These are the different open space kind of parameters.
In a subdivision?
Yeah, so if you think about, like, somebody's backyard, why wouldn't their deck or patio be considered part of the open space? It's, that's the way-
Well, what's the difference between a patio and like a concrete paver driveway?
Well, patio is a place for people to occupy, is the way I look at it. But a driveway is a place for cars to occupy. And I took streets, driveways, and surface parking out of the open space here.
But someone could put a whole patty, a whole concrete paver driveway and-
Fill their whole backyard.
Fill their whole backyard, and then say, it's my patio.
But we happen to park on it at night.
Yeah.
Plus, it just feels like hardscape, as opposed to, like Maggie's point, just grass, you know?
Could it be impervious?
Pavers are impervious.
No, technically not. There are some pavers, pavers that are impervious and some are impervious.
Those ones you get that you can space and grow grass in between.
All right, well, I mean, I'm fine with you want to take patio out.
The problem is it weighs around everything.
Like, if somebody had a basketball court, and you're saying that's covered in, like, that's not supposed to be open space?
I think, given the task at hand, we're getting hung up on small stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so, come back, come back to it, another one. So, under setbacks, I thought it should be explicit that no structure is erected within the required setbacks, and that you can limit the amount of, of a driveway that could be within the setback. We already said that parking can't be in the setback. Then I added that parking should be located to the sides and to the rear to the greatest extent possible. And then-
Does 30% of the setback allow the width of a driveway? Is that, driveways may be located within the required setbacks, provided that no more than 30% of the setback area shall be paved with that?
So if you say if you had a, do we have a minimum frontage requirement, Tim?
50 feet in the transit area.
So 50 feet, 12 feet, of, on 50 would be what?
The parameter we've got also is minimum five feet setback, but the minimum sum of the setbacks has got to be 20 feet. So it allows an offset.
The minimum sum of the setbacks?
Right, so you could, so, so you could have a five-foot setback on one side and a 15-foot setback on the other.
Yeah.
So 12 feet wide is, is 0.24 of 50?
Yeah.
Seems like it would work.
Yeah, 30% will do it. Okay.
Landscaping at the parking perimeter. So this is really, I think, a way to kind of address the aesthetic of parking that people are concerned about, is that you buffer it.
Yeah, but five feet really isn't enough for a planting bed to grow too much of anything.
You could change it.
We have some in our neighborhood that are private hedges, that-
Yep.
Have been used, but-
I did start with a little bit more, and then I dropped it down. So we could look at these numbers again. Again, the idea is to require it, and then-
It is, yeah.
If you wanted to up that to, like, eight feet in some areas and more in others. But I did, I did see, too, where in certain areas that a narrow one can be effective in some places.
So if there's a five-foot minimum setback, side setback on these?
So you can't plant, like, your minimum side drive setback is five feet. So your parking can't be in there. So, but you would have to landscape it here.
So maybe seven feet, seven or eight feet?
So then if it's landscaped with, like, you know, some type of shrub, then there's actually no space for kids to play.
You emailed Josh and had him put that in there?
No, like, so, the idea is if-
Wouldn't that be the term we're looking for?
You're going to have a perimeter of planting just around your landscaping. In a transit area, it doesn't need to be very wide, because, you know, you want to leave the space for play area, garden, whatever else.
So it wouldn't be just cars, would be pulled right up, you know, and parked at six feet. I'd be afraid that if your five-foot buffer was your five-foot of trees, and then your car would be parked at six feet.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, we could say, some of these might need a little fine tuning for the transit area versus other areas, because you're smaller lots. But I'd say, like, the concept of having landscaping at the parking perimeter is a good one to include. So, you know, again, we could think about those dimensions a little bit further. And then the next one on the landscaping at the parking interior is to address the large parking lots. Like, when we looked at utilities layouts for Granite Ave, and you see those huge parking lots, and you think all the impervious area there. I, I looked at design guidelines and other places in putting these together. So there's, they're not taken from any one place, but they're informed by various ones. So this idea of a landscape divider every, after every 10 parking spaces, and then shade trees there, so that you really can get the parking lot to look much better that way. And then at the end of a run of parking spaces, you'd have a landscape area as well. And that's what those minimum five-foot wide terminus landscape elements are. And then the next one, screening for parking adjacent to the public sidewalk. So I didn't change the public sidewalk, I just had added the other ones. I didn't change the parking materials, it seemed okay. I added existing landscape. I don't know how far that we can really take this, but it did seem that we should, I don't, I know the definition of what is significant, what's significant in an existing site feature, but trees located within setbacks seem like something that could be defined. There's some large ones. Stone walls and historic fences. So those seem to be at the perimeter. And so it seemed to me, if we could try and get those preserved and called out, we should.
Like a certain caliper size?
I just put them within the setback, but we could call it a caliper. And then I added this about landscaping being a design as a placemaking feature, and not just a buffer. So when you're looking at these large parcels, that you actually have places within the landscape. And then under plantings, I thought we should include that it's mandated to require shade trees.
And I think it should be of a certain size.
So if you want to-
Not just put in some rinky-dink, like, six-to-eight-foot tree.
So we can add calipers. Some, I saw a lot of them said two-inch, but I don't know-
Minimum, should be like three.
Yeah.
I would say three, yeah. I think the twos have struggled.
And then, under lighting, I felt like we don't want to exceed that, what the engineering, the lighting recommendations in the Engineering Society.
Should be dark sky compliant.
And they should be dark sky compliant, yeah. On the mechanicals, not located in the front yard setback or in the open space, and they should be screened. I'm, I'm thinking like transformers. So this is, again, sort of larger development, not the smaller ones. But we ran into that at 440 Granite Ave, in terms of where they're putting the transformer, for example. And then, ones on the rooftops should be incorporated into the architecture, so not just so visible.
I think if you're referring to transformers, you should add those words, because mechanical equipment typically wouldn't be, transformer wouldn't be considered a mechanical piece of equipment. Probably need to add that specificity.
And height includes mechanical, right, on this, in the zoning? I'm trying to remember.
It allows for things to go above.
So I think we should look at that, just to put a footnote. I think height, you know, should include mechanicals. Not like cupolas or pergolas, but mechanical, that should, because that's going to be framed around the, the roof line. So that's, that can potentially add eight to 10 feet onto a 75-foot building.
You want the mechanicals on the roof, though?
You want them, but you want-
You don't want them on the ground or the basement?
Yeah, but it makes-
Correct, but you want it, I think, included in the total height.
But we're moving towards slope roofs, right? I just want to make sure I haven't lost track of-
But we, well, let's think about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure about including the equipment in the total height, because that might send somebody to do ground-mounted equipment, to Tim's point.
Yeah. Well, it was an issue with 440 and the total height. I think that was something that I was looking at. What are, you know, in Hendry's, you know, when you're looking at the height of a building, and then you're looking at, you know, a gate or whatever you're going to enclose, enclosure?
Well, that's why I was grating it into the architecture, I thought, might do what the slope roof.
So-
Pardon?
Oh, some of the residents have been here for a while.
Yeah, I feel that, I agree with you.
All right, so, how close are we to getting to the end here?
Okay.
All right, let's just, I added this about resiliency and sustainability. Those Granite Ave properties are, you know, really kind of close to marshland and so forth. So I just thought that it doesn't mandate anything in particular, but it does ask for them to comment on it, Tim. Do you think that'll pass muster?
I, I, you got to try. I mean, like, it's that important.
All right, so, then the renewable energy, I thought we should address that as well. And low-impact development, again, these are things we're striving towards. We haven't necessarily pushed through on everything, but if we're doing new zoning, it seems like we should put in what we're striving for. This is the stormwater piece, that, Jim, that comes in there, all of the requirements. I didn't change that, other than putting in that low-impact development opportunity.
And that's just in keeping with the rest of the town?
I think so. Tim put that in, yeah. I did a little bit under mixed-use development, addressing retail facades having greater portions of transparency than solid, including small setbacks at the street level to incorporate seating, displays, and rain cover. And then sidewalks with, sidewalk width at retail facades being a minimum of 10 feet.
So could we ever, I think I brought this up before, and I was probably shot down, but restricting our commercial to non-chains, corporate chains?
It's been done.
Yeah, let's try and do that.
It's a, it's a big bite right now, considering everything else. But I mean, that's, and again, that's a broader kind of policy that you may want to think about for all of the business districts. I mean, I, I think about, I, I have a buddy in San Francisco that worked on their kind of, you know, chain retail kind of limits. So it's, it's been done, but it's, it's complicated. So if that's a priority, again, I don't want to discourage it, but maybe that's a future thing, as opposed to right now.
No red lobster, Maggie.
No red lobster. Ian won't be happy with that.
Bumming. Chipotle's good. Anyway.
All right, that's something to think about, how we-
We are getting a burrito place at the plate.
All right, so retail facades shall-
So looking forward to that.
Greater proportion, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to add, look at some of our overlay zoning. I, I think a lot of what we did in the Milton Village was really good, some standards and design guidelines that-
Yeah, we can add some more on the mixed use. I feel like I, there's more that could be added there. Under the outdoor space, we talked a little bit. Outdoor space I see is different than open space. So maybe what we could do, Maggie, is consider the patio as being outdoor space rather than open space, so that we can look at these two things. I took out this weird provision under fire exits, not facing streets, because the whole idea about a fire exit is to get people to the street.
Right.
Right? So it's a weird design requirement, in my opinion. So it's a weird design requirement, in my opinion. I took it out. And then I added a lot of requirements under design features, building design features.
Okay, back to that fire exit, could you say, but they need to be buffered from the street, like buffered? Because a lot of times they're not very attractive looking.
I guess what you could say is they can be integrated into the architecture, something like that, because they, they don't have to be unattractive. So if you say that they're integrated into the architecture, I think that might give you some room to cover it in the site plan review. All right, so under design features for buildings, so part of this, Meredith's kind of picking up on Milton Village where the building form, massing, and roof line shall reflect and reinforce historic buildings and styles of the surrounding context. And this language, the next sentence is right out of Milton Village, "Particular attention should be paid to the design elements of scale, proportion, overall style, facade design, windows, entrances, building materials, and color." And then the next one is probably pretty similar too, not as specific as Milton Village because I don't know, this is applying to more districts, "But taller buildings shall be stepped back or reduced in height when adjacent to lower intensity residential uses." And then the next one, "Building facades shall have varied horizontal and vertical setbacks to create interesting and attractive facades while maintaining minimum average setbacks." So those are in Milton Village, slightly different language. And then the building design shall incorporate elements that provide relief in facade and roof planes such as porches, overhangs, projections, recesses, bay windows, and dormers. And then this one is to address kind of the flat facade you see on some buildings in some places. So building form and materials shall respond to each other and change in material shall accompany a change in form or plane. So change in materials within the same plane to reduce perceived bulk is prohibited. So that's to get away from some, some things that I think are pretty unattractive elsewhere. And then about the materials, "Using durable materials that convey scale and their proportion, texture, finish, and detailing, and that contribute to the visual continuity of the existing historic neighborhoods." And then this one, next one is really, I think, thinking of the transit area, locating in addition to the side or rear of a historic building. And then same thing with H, minimize the potential disruption of privacy of adjacent neighbors through design that restricts views into adjoining buildings, private open spaces, yards, and patios. And then, you don't like that one?
No, I think on all of these, I mean, I mean, so obviously the intent and probably the effect of all of these would be, would be good. I think you should be prepared for a question about, are these, are these objective standards that you could adjudicate in site plan review? As opposed to, because I mean, if you're looking at the Milton Village guidelines especially, that's a special department process where the planning board has a lot more discretion to interpret things. So, I mean, we're walking the line on a lot of these things, you know, there are elements, you know, up top in some of the, the general sort of development standards where, you know, there's not necessarily a requirement, so you can kind of sneak around that. But I think, you know, you, you know, someone at the state may look at this and be like, you know, attractive facades.
Right.
You know, how do you, how do you, how do you judge that?
They have varied horizontal and vertical set, I mean, I think these are fairly.
I tried to be pretty specific without giving dimensions, but, and without calling out materials. So I, I think we can think about it and look at.
We can't call out materials. I just sent all you guys an email of a building that I fell in love with from a Realtor, but it's like, when I think of Granite Ave, I love something like that. It's got all these different heights and setbacks and things and brick and wood. We can't get into this level of design, can we?
Well, that's what I was concerned about in terms of.
With design guidelines, we could, we provided photographs and pictures when we did the overlay zoning in Milton Village. We gave examples of this is what we're, we would like to see.
And so what we did with the.
We could do that here?
Standards versus the guidelines was like the standards. I think, I mean, maybe we could, if you want to call out particular materials, but you have to be mindful, we might want to separate different districts then because, you know, if you're going to say something for the, let's say Granite Ave districts, it might be not the same as the transit area. Because like the transit area has a lot of different materials. You'll find stucco, brick, wood, you know.
I would say this just for the larger areas.
Yeah.
In the transit area triplex would be typical of what's there.
Yeah, we could, I think, think about.
We could think about that.
Putting materials in.
I was watching like Manchester by the sea, their discussion on this, and they were going down to what their right to the materials of the foundation, that's what they were talking about.
If we're going to limit this by guidelines, let's do what we want as opposed to just, you know, some rectangles.
No, I think, that's why I think this, more detail is going to be needed to be added.
So there's, you know, like what we did, Milton Village was a certain number of standards and then later we went to the guidelines. So the standards have to, I guess this whole question to Tim's point, whether they're objective and you can, it's not subjective to someone's opinion, is definitely what the state's saying here. You can do the guidelines, but they can't be subjective, so.
So that's what Maggie was saying. Manchester was being specific. They're saying wood, stone, brick, granite are the required use.
And are they an accessory community?
Yeah, and adjacent, I think.
Adjacent community?
So if we finish, I want to show you what I, I think I built in that kind of allows for some flexibility, but ties it back to the historic. So just, I want to address the Granite Ave sub-district in particular here because this first sentence, "The project design shall foster an appearance of a residential neighborhood with multiple buildings of various sizes, scale, height, and building types." So this is so that we don't get just big blocky building there. And then I define, or I give the building types that could be duplexes, triplexes, and so forth, and the mixed use. So that, this is requiring that the development have some mix of this building type on this property. So it's not all one thing. And then the next is on the site planning, specific to the Granite Ave, is to provide a pedestrian-oriented and human-scaled environment where the automobile is accommodated but not dominate, utilize internal streets and sidewalks, and design pedestrian connectivity between buildings and outdoor spaces. We don't have blocks, you know, where you have something that this much acreage where you don't have streets, you know? So it seems to me this leads to be thought of like a neighborhood. And so that's what I put in here. And then if you go to a little bit further down, Tim, the, I added that, that's verbatim from the model zoning on design guidelines. And then if you go down to site plan and design review, I changed that to not be just site plan review, but site plan and design review. I think Brooklyn has it identified that way.
So if you went back up, sorry, to affordability, there's no affordability in it?
10%.
It is 10%.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, was Newton going up to 15%?
Yeah, they've, they've got a financial feasibility analysis. So in order to go above 10%, you've got to provide, they have a scope for basically what type of, you've got, you've got to basically have an independent third party demonstrate that projects are feasible under a greater than 10%, 10% inclusionary scheme.
The town actually has to undergo that?
Yeah.
Should we undergo that?
I think it's a fine idea.
Do you know who their consultant was who did that for them?
There's, there's, there's a bunch that have been doing them across, across the Commonwealth. So that's definitely something that we.
Don't we want to get in the queue for that? We probably should for, could you get across on that, what that would be?
All right.
That would be great.
Yep.
And it has to be done, Tim, by who?
Just a third party. They want a sort of a, like I said, there's, there's, there's a number of consultants that have been doing this and they have, they have a kind of a general, like, here's what we want to see, we want to see X, Y, and Z, and you get someone to provide that for you. One of the things that's been kind of happening, and I think the state's trying to get a little bit of a handle on it, I might have mentioned this in the past, is some of these consultants are kind of loading up their scopes with things that are frankly unnecessary. So I think the state's kind of in the process of trying to come up with like a standard, like, look, we only want to see this, this, and this. So I think, I think now is probably a better time than three months ago to have done this because, you know, we'll save money, quite frankly. But we can, we can initiate that and try to get someone on board. I don't know if we'll be able to get that done, you know, before December, but we've got the affordability that we can have by right in here and it's just a matter of, you know, go back at the annual and crank that up if we need to.
All right, so let's try to, thank you. We can talk about that and maybe find out what, what the timeline is for that next meeting would be great. And we should finish up because we do have some people who are here in the public.
And unfortunately, I think we just lost some.
Just lost a couple.
So, so I think we should get to them first.
All right.
The one thing I would caution is some folks, I think, who came in and this is their first learning of this. And so I think we're going to really need to have each meeting, you know, if people are starting to become aware, how we address the fact that we're like past, if we want to keep moving forward. I guess I'm just trying to think about how we make sure that we have that time.
I think we have to let people speak.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Ascend comments, yes, absolutely. All right, I think we're getting close down here to the site plan review.
So do you want to finish this? Okay. Under site plan review, I want.
Do we want to take a break and just let some people speak?
Yeah, let's take a break and let people speak.
We'll do that and then we'll, then we won't feel rushed in this. So yes, if you'd like to come and join us at the table, and if you wanted to state your name and your address for the record.
Sure. I'm Ashley Brown, 50 Columbine Road. I spoke last week, but on Zoom.
Great.
So thank you all for all of your time and all of planning on this. I'm coming for a few reasons. One, to say that I, you know, do support, I think it's, is it Plan 1P now? I'm not sure of the total number, but the Transit Area Triplex Plan that had been discussed at the last planning meeting. You know, I think it was the most thoughtful. I saw that the consultant recommended it. Seems like we can get into compliance, but in a way that, you know, puts the development in smart places. I have been following what's been going on with the Select Board as well, and I listened to the Warrant Committee meeting earlier this week. And, you know, I looked at the Select Board materials that they had put before their meeting, and I also watched the Select Board meeting. And I think that there is a problem that in the Select Board materials, the map that is attached is actually the map that was for like, I think, Plan 1C, which is the most similar to the one that you are now going with, 1P. But the actual zoning bylaw is the, what was it called? Not the Transit Area Triplex, which is the map, it was the.
Tiered?
The one with 10,000 square, yeah.
And so, and then I watched the meeting because I thought there must be somewhere where they showed this map in the meeting before they adopted the tiered transit area bylaw, but with a copy of the Transit Area Triplex map. And there was not. And I think that it was a mistake, but when I looked at the meetings, or the, excuse me, the materials, it looks like they just attached an email that I think the town planner had sent because he noted in the email that the maps were still in process. But what they submitted to the public is a bylaw.
Correct.
That shows the tiered transit area and a map that does not reflect that. And I think that hasn't been put anywhere in public forum. The map was not shown at the Select Board meeting. The map was not shown at the MBTA community meeting, and it hasn't been shown, you know, on the Select Board website. And I do plan on going to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday and being vocal about this. But I think it's clear that the Select Board wants there to be something at town meeting, and I think that this group clearly has a lot of the detail and analysis and thought and knows, you know, what has gone into this. And so I would just urge the Select Board and the Planning Board to work together because to the extent we have things going to town meeting that have inaccurate maps against the zoning language, I think is kind of a mistake, but it's still, it still is not a genuine representation of what's being proposed. And I think it could be inadvertently deceptive. And I'm hesitant to use that word because I don't think there's any ill intention behind any of it. But I think just making sure that the maps track the bylaws is critically important because most people in this town are not zoning attorneys reviewing the bylaws for the specific criteria. They're looking at the map. And so it's just a concern that I have. And I, I know that you're all working very hard to try to put together a smart and effective plan. And I hope that the Select Board and the Planning Board can work together to do so so that at town meeting, you know, the town is really put in the best position to think about, you know, at this vote, I do think it's important that the members of the town are given a compliant option. And what the town does at that meeting is up to the town. But I think that a compliant option should be set forward, and I sincerely hope that it's one that's put forward with Planning Board, you know, consideration and thoughtfulness because what was, you know, put forward by the Select Board, again, I think it was just a mistake, but it's not consistent and that concerns me. So I will be speaking at the Select Board as well, and I also heard at the Warrant Committee meeting that the Select Board seems to be very open to input and to revising the plan and that they were waiting to hear what came out of this meeting tonight. And so I'll be there, I'll be advocating for what I think they should do, and I hope that everyone else is as well because to the extent, you know, the groups can come up with one plan, I think that's probable. Or at least one compliant plan and then whatever the town does, the town does, but having consistency in the maps and the, and the article, I think, is, is critical. So I want to thank everyone for their time and.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks.
All right. I won't take up much of your time. I feel like I'm a little bit late on this meeting. We all got these in our mailboxes the last couple of days and it kind of opened our eyes. I don't know.
Can you tell us your name and address for the record, please?
Julie Crowley, and I live on Thistle Ave in Milton, obviously. But I guess the only thing I wanted to say at this meeting is if we're putting something on Granite Ave, I would invite everyone to try to get on the highway from 6:45 in the morning until 9:00 AM. I can't leave my house and then can't get back to my house during that time in any kind of capacity. That's reasonable for, you know, my day-to-day life. And I guess that's just something that this change on Granite Ave will compound, and I hope that we can find some solutions in that end that will make it so that it is not so impactful for the people who live there. And I just generally want to say awareness of this is just a little bit confusing for a lot of us who live in this area. Yeah, so.
Do you guys have a neighborhood association?
I don't think so. No, I mean, I've lived there for 10 years and so I'm just kind of blown away that they're going to add more traffic to an area where it just has become so absolutely ridiculous to be able to get on and off and get to work and go to Boston. And I guess if we're doing this for the MBTA, that's not a real thing that helps me out because I'm one of those people who live in Milton and don't work in the city, so.
I think maybe just, Tim, it would be helpful for you to give just a really brief overview of the law and just what the.
Yeah, no, I read about the law. I've been sitting here like reading this whole time, advocating myself, so I do appreciate that. Again, I'm, you know, obviously a little bit ignorant on this, I'm a little late to the party, but.
But you're not alone.
Yeah, I don't feel like I'm alone here. I really feel like there's a lot of people who live on these very small, pocketed neighborhoods who are going to be extremely impacted on the day-to-day by putting something this absolutely massive on our front lots.
So just so you also recognize.
I'm sure you've looked everywhere around and tried to find places, and I'm sure it hasn't been easy, but.
We could do more.
Tim mentioned it's zoning and not a development proposal.
Yes, I do understand that, like we haven't gotten any deals going, we're just changing what's going on for like who can build there and there'll be proposals and it will be a long time, so I have plenty of time to figure out where I'm going to be.
Or not.
Or not, maybe. But I think just the traffic concern is, is, yeah, like.
Legitimate, yeah.
Pretty legitimate, and it would be nice if you were, you know, trying to get us all on board, you know. all on board, you know, let us know if there's any plan to alleviate that or any business.
I recognize and sympathize with your traffic comment.
Yeah.
I also drive the Southeast Expressway.
It's why.
So I can't find a time that I can go down Granite Ave and not find a queue that's probably 25, 30 cars deep, maybe even longer.
I can't go get coffee and come back in the morning, I gotta Uber it.
Your point is, your point's accurate because I experience it every day, I understand it, I don't think you're sensationalizing it at all. It's real, it's a real issue. Traffic in the town is a real issue, everywhere in the town.
Yeah, I mean, we're one of like the biggest bottlenecks even in like the country, let alone, you know, just our.
And to your point, I do think the, the title, I don't know if it was you or someone else had said that the title of the law is MBTA community.
Yes.
So I've come across people who have, who didn't pay attention because in their mind, they're like, I don't, yeah, we don't live by the trolley. So they weren't really paying attention because they didn't think that they were going to be impacted. That's what I'm hearing from people from outside the Elliott Street corridor, and I think even naming it like the Transit Triplex is a little misleading because people don't know what that means. If you're a Milton resident and you're reading the paper or hearing it, you're like, well, where is that? You know, so I think maybe we need to do a better job of saying, this is Elliott Street corridor we're talking about, this is the Columbines we're talking about, this is Granite Ave. Like, we have to use the terms that our residents are familiar with.
The language that we understand, I appreciate that. Because again, I'm, I'm pretty in tune. I read a lot on the news, I knew there was a law coming out that we, you know, had, I didn't realize the impact that it was going to have on me and my neighborhood. Or potential, again, I understand this is all, you know, zoning is the first step, and then we go from there to.
The one thing I would say about, about the, the site that's opposite, those Granite Ave sites, you know, particularly the one that's owned by the state, there's no, I mean, we'll see what the state decides to do with it, but there's, there's, I don't, I, there were some people who have said, oh, somebody's going to take my land or something's going, nobody's compelled to sell, nobody's compelled to change, you know, there's no eminent domain, there's nothing like that. So it's, so in case anybody has that misunderstanding, it's, it's providing opportunity for housing, which the state identified as a need. And even, I read that the MBTA didn't like the fact that they were put into the name of the law because they have nothing to do with the law.
Yeah.
I mean, it's coming from the legislature, but it does have, you know, support, you know, at the governor's level and so forth to address a housing shortage issue. So, and the, you know, I think that all the communities that are required to comply are struggling with how best to do it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not easy.
There's not so much land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not easy.
Well, we sympathize with this because this is a tough issue for us. We've talked about this now for weeks and months, and the, and I'm certainly on record, you can go back and listen to the previous meetings, and your areas, one area that I have deep concern for.
Thank you.
I've said it numerous times, there's three parcels of land, only three parcels of land that could lead to, at least in terms of zoning, Cheryl made an argument tonight that it'll never get to the number based on zoning requirements, but right on paper right now, you saw it earlier, it's 700 units.
Yeah.
Between two Granite Ave and, and the other two parcels. So it's a tremendous impact to your small community that lives across the street from that, that, you know, the parcel. So we get it, it's, it's a big deal, and, you know, from my position, I think all residents in town should understand what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And, and they should speak and express their point of view, and I'm glad you're here tonight to express yours.
I appreciate you, and I also appreciate the minutia of the plans, making it something that, you know, might be nice to look at.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're trying to understand each of these districts, you know, each of these, and the parameters that we're putting in place to really not, to make it the best it can be, you know, and be compliant. Yeah, so not just having it be something we hope for the best, you know, really trying.
And to your point, your area, that area in particular is outside the half-mile buffer. So personally, since this is your first time here, I've pushed back on it because I do feel like if this is supposed to be transit-oriented development, we're supposed to go for climate initiatives, then we should follow the law.
That's right.
The law is three paragraphs, and, and that's a big concern for me. I'm not super excited about zoning anything that's outside the half-mile buffer because that's not what the law says. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this, so I know it's your first time here, and you just listened to all of the, the detail that is being discussed, but I want you to know that so much, there's been a lot of discussion.
Yes.
About, you know, the issues of kind of, you know, taking time, we've asked for more time, you know, our staff, there's only two full-time employees in Julia. We've got a very small staff, and it's a lot of work for them. So I think that we should ask for more time.
Is that a possibility? How can I help you?
Call the governor.
Well, just, just so, just so you're aware, we can make you as aware as you possibly can be tonight.
I'm, I'm very enlightened tonight, I really appreciate you. I've been reading a lot of laws and a lot of agendas, so.
The Select Board has submitted a letter requesting consideration. Tim, I want to say this properly, so if I don't say it correctly, please correct me, but they, they outlined an argument for why we should be considered an adjacent community, which would change the required percentage.
Okay.
From 25% down to 10%. They requested a response by the 6th of October, which is tomorrow. There's no guarantee they'll get a response.
Okay.
So you, you should at least take away from, from the conversation.
Make sure that update.
That the Select Board is, is advocating for relief. Whether they're successful or not, we don't know. We can't operate, and we haven't been operating, under the premise that we would get relief. Tim's on record as saying that, how would you want to say it, Tim? I think you've said it.
I think I said vanishingly, vanishingly small.
That's probably your expression, right?
And, and we have, we have been in touch with the state, they've gotten our letter, they're preparing a response.
Yeah.
Might not come tomorrow, but it'll come within the next week or so.
So, so there is.
And the Select Board's letter does not request adjacent community designation.
Oh, is that Josh?
The Select Board's letter does not request reclassification as an adjacent community, just for clarity.
Just justification for our classification, more or less.
Indeed.
But we've pushed for more time.
The most recent letter was actually to the Department of, was to HLC.
Yeah, HLC.
And it was the conflict in the, in the, in the guidelines, which contradicts the definition of, of rapid transit.
Yeah.
So that was the most recent. And that, Tim, just to clarify, that went to.
The housing secretary.
The housing, but it went to Chris.
Yeah.
Which was. Wasn't he the MAPC?
No, she, no, no, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Chris Kucinich.
Okay, I just want, I'm like, this really is a small world.
Yeah, 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 no, no, Chris Fudgeman is the, is the deputy secretary that's kind of heading up the 3A efforts.
Okay, great. So, thank you.
I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, and please, yeah, we appreciate your coming.
And the next one's the 26th of October, is that what you?
Actually, we have a, the 12th, next Thursday.
Basically every Thursday from now till eternity.
Yeah.
But bring neighbors.
Maybe you'll see me back every Thursday.
Bring your neighbors, bring your opinions, bring your neighbors.
Yeah, no, and I'm also going to speak to people in my neighborhood.
Please, please do.
And just sort of see what they know, and maybe they're more, you know, knowledgeable on, on the situation than I am.
Start a neighborhood group. Neighborhood party, watch that last forum.
Yeah.
Because then you get all the background, and then you can come in with your questions and comments, you know, because I think that will really help you all, like, catch up.
Yeah.
And then reach out to your town meeting members, whoever they are. Talk to them about this, see what they know. They might not know about it either.
Our town meeting members might not, oh my goodness. Okay, I don't feel as ignorant, all right.
You're not ignorant, you're taken by surprise.
That's how I feel, so.
I just want to say that the town meeting members should know because they all got a letter from me telling them to sign up for my email list and follow these meetings. So of all the people in the town that should know, I think it should be town meeting members.
And the town meeting members do not have to vote for it.
Okay.
Yes.
So tell them.
That's the key.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have Ashley on the Zoom. I don't have privileges, though, so someone can elevate her.
Is that you?
Hi, thank, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for your time, I apologize in advance. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, clearly it's been a lot. You know, I was just made aware of this today while visiting my parents to support their current health concerns, so you can imagine, under these circumstances, it's obviously not directed at all of you, I was really shocked and appalled by this information that I was met with. Like Ms. Crowley, I, my parents showed me the pamphlet that was dropped in their mailbox by a neighbor. You know, as I stated, I, former long-term resident of Milton, from birth in 1984, Milton Public Schools, all that stuff. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents who are current, oh, sorry, 27 Riverside Ave in Milton, so it's off of Thistle, which is off of Granite. My parents have resided there for over 43 years, and, you know, like Ms. Crowley, apparently my parents' neighbor, you know, this would, this planning would negatively impact their, their lives, and directly, you know, impact their, their current daily experience. You know, there's a lot of conversation about aesthetics, which, you know, I can sort of understand, I am a social worker, so people is always my forefront, and little discussion, I don't want to say consideration because I don't think it's personal towards you all, little discussion about the current residents and taxpayers that live in these areas. You know, I'm, I'm curious if anyone in the planning or zoning committees live in these specified areas that would negatively be impacted by these building plans. I understand that this is a push from the larger government that you're not responsible for. You know, the traffic on Granite Ave, as discussed, is already overwhelming. I do currently live in Quincy, but travel down Granite Ave to get to work in the city takes over 20 minutes from Squanton Street, like, is it West Squanton and Granite to the Onramp. My mom works overnight at Milton Hospital, she has for over 30 years. It takes her sometimes 45 minutes to get home from Milton Hospital to our home right off of Granite Ave. You know, it's impossible to leave the street, to go to the square during any high-traffic times without the risk of a serious accident. My brother and I were in a very serious accident as a younger, you know, in high school, trying to navigate that traffic pattern, and that was over 20 years ago, so think about like the massive influx. And I know Milton overall, right, the Square, Randolph Ave, all of these areas are heavily impacted by this increase in traffic. Sorry, I'm saying a lot, it's just been a long, long day, long meeting. You know, as a social worker, I'm fully supportive of building housing for individuals of all, you know, walks of life. If this planning is to move forward, I highly, highly recommend, request, emphasize that traffic lights at minimum if this were to move forward, traffic lights be placed at Thistle and Granite Ave, as well as Portland Circle and Granite Ave, to impact these really small communities. I'm, I'm shocked that we, nobody knew about this, but I'm also not. It's a really, you know, small communities that just sort of enjoy this privacy of being part of Milton, but really close to Dorchester and really separate from a lot of, you know, the other goings-on. And overall, Milton is not T accessible. The MBTA as a whole is terrible and not really functional. I work in Boston and wouldn't possibly take the T to, to get to work. Most people in Milton that I know do drive to Quincy, so still needing cars. And I know that was a lot to say, but I really appreciate all of your time and thoughtfulness in sharing this information, that's new to a lot of us, so thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Any other hands up on Zoom? Or comments? Or anyone else?
No further hand. Oh, we have Chris Shirley, actually, just raised his hand.
Chris, okay.
Chris, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello, does everybody hear me right?
Yes, hi, welcome, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris Shirley at 55 Cortland Circle, next to Thistle. Keep it kind of short here because the previous two speakers have echoed our traffic concerns for sure, but like to reiterate that I also got a, not a mailer, but a flyer dropped off in my mailbox about this as well, very detailed about what's going on, so I'm another one that was kind of ignorant to, to this after, what, this was passed in '22, I think, so understand the deadline now and what's being, you know, taking place, and really want to echo the inefficiency of the MBTA in Milton, especially in our neighborhood. Somebody used to take the 215 to Ashmont to get to work, it's probably 90 minutes to the Leather District in Boston, going through Ashmont to South Station, so the fact that we're talking about development to be closer to the MBTA, and we're also talking about, you know, parking spaces and whatnot, it seems pretty ironic, so again, I know it's not anybody here that want to be, you know, personal attacks by any means, understand the hard work that's been going on after sitting through this meeting, so I do appreciate the work, but the MBTA for Milton is very inefficient, especially in this area where I can get to downtown Boston from my house in rush hour in 25 minutes consistently, and because I don't have to wait on Granite to get on the 93, so we certainly are, feel like a driving community here, and the fact that, well, anyway, somebody used to do the 215, it was certainly an hour, hour and a half to get back just because of the schedules, back and forth, so. I think our Circle and Thistle are now understanding kind of what's going on here, doing some more research, I think y'all are going to be hearing from us a little bit more on this, and, and it sounds like your concerns are our concerns, and we appreciate that, so there are some other folks that have some issues with rezoning in what used to be a flood zone, the park and ride and the DPW. That is now not a flood zone thanks to Quincy, so there's some, some issues with those lots anyway, which we'd like to hear some kind of resolutions on, or maybe why these areas are being considered if there are known issues with them. Some people have been talking about contaminated water, we're also concerned about the sewage upgrades that would have to happen here if we're adding, what, 500 units in, in just one spot, so things that I'm sure you guys have talked about over the last year, year and a half, so apologies for coming into this late, but we all have some concerns about this, I'd say, after the last couple of days, and I think we're going to want to hear some more about it if, if most of these units seem to be in our area here. So I'll stop rambling, sorry.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your comments, thank you. And did you have one more comment? Yes, Ashley.
Ashley Brown, 50 Columbine Road. I realize I referenced the wrong, like, plan number and letter, I think 1P is actually the tiered, or sorry, the tiered transit area, which includes Columbine Road. I do not support that plan. I support the Transit Area Triplex with the mandatory mixed use, I believe is what it's called, which was the one recommended by the consultant, and I figured I said it wrong, just wanted to be clear about that. The one that you guys are currently using, I think, is what you're working off of right now for additional modeling, the one that was recommended by the consultant, tiered transit area mixed use, that's the one. I didn't want to be on the record supporting the wrong one.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're referring to option 1N?
N or P, right?
No, it's definitely not P.
It's 1.
I believe 1N was the one at the last meeting, which was the mandatory mixed use in Transit Area Triplex.
Right.
My husband's texting me, he's probably telling me the right one. And that one did not include as much of the Columbines. I think 1P was the one, I want to make sure I'm speaking right here. Yeah, 1P was the one that the consultants did not recommend, which included a lot of the Columbines, and I think I had said 1P earlier, so I just wanted to be clear, I do not support that one. I support the Transit Area Triplex with the mandatory mixed use.
So that's the 1N, option 1N.
1N, yes. Thank you. 1N, yes. Thank you.
All right. Cheryl, how much more do we have to, if we go back to the, because I know, I want members to be able to...
Yeah, I just want the site plan design review.
I appreciate this work, yeah.
Can I follow, before we go back there, can I just comment on a, I'd like to follow up on a comment that Maggie made. And I, I see a ton of validity in what she said. I don't think that the Transit Area Triplex description is, is helping us, you know.
I've never liked the triplex description.
Well, call it the Elliot Street Triplex then, if you like. But it's not, you know, the, the folks that are here tonight, if we didn't call it Granite Ave and we called it Napontet River or something like that, they may not have been as aware of what was happening in the neighborhood. If you live on Elliot Street and you consistently hear Elliot Street corridor, which is where we started.
Which is what I started in the beginning calling it.
They would be paying attention to it. But no, the Transit Area Triplex does not, one of our residents, I think, probably said it better than I'm trying to say it, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't denote the area, it doesn't help people identify the area. There's an awful lot of people that, Elliot Street is a very well-known area. If you live on it or live near it, you hear Elliot Street, you know it's your neighborhood. I don't think it's helping us in terms of getting the message out to the residents, naming it what we're naming it.
So one thing, we're naming Milton and Central, and we're naming Matapan based on the stations that are there. We could call it Valley Capin, if you want to keep that consistent with the stations, or Elliot Street.
Elliot Street, that district is almost, Elliot Street runs right through all of it.
I'm fine with calling it that. I mean, I was, we were calling it that for the longest time. And I've never liked transit, or triplex, rather, as a term for this district. So I'm, I'm fine with that. I think, just in terms of the comments I put in the, in the site plan design review, I just, I have found over time that our site plan review requirements need to be updated because we, we ask for things when we get an application that aren't in the requirements. So if you just look at this, a lot of this is kind of what we've been asking for.
Can we get back on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm working on it. Okay, thank you.
So before we get up there, existing conditions survey, you know, is not even a requirement right now in this. So obviously, we want that showing structures, parking areas, open space features, walls, fences, trees, utilities, easements, and topography. And that's very standard. They're going to need it, anyway. The next thing I'm asking for, which ties back to some of the guidelines, is an existing conditions narrative, including adjacent neighborhood and historic context with photographs and diagrams as appropriate. So that shows that they analyze the neighborhood context and that their design is going to take it into consideration. So if they give us the narrative, we have something to, for them to, for us to refer back to in reviewing their, what they propose. And then the site plan itself, that it should show the required setbacks. And I add it, it should show the parking areas open, space areas dimensioned, and so forth, more detail than what was required here. I'm requiring separately a landscape plan that shows more detail. It calls out what we want on that landscape plan. And that would be the layout, the species, the spacing, the sizes, the quantities, and the details for all plant materials, and locations and details of fencing and landscape walls. More architectural drawings that are called out for, including the architectural plans, elevation, sections, three-dimensional views and renderings of the building or buildings, showing the architectural design and the buildings in context. Drawings shall include proposed materials and colors. So the context is important, so that they're not showing us something in isolation. A lighting plan for the, I just called it the Transit Area here, but just showing the light fixtures, not requiring a photometric plan for a three-unit kind of property, but of actual photometric plan for all the other districts. The traffic study, again, not for the Transit Areas, the small, the three-unit, but traffic study for the rest of the districts. And shadow study for the larger districts as well.
Do you think an overall traffic study should be done, though, along the Elliot Street corridor?
I wouldn't put that as an imposition on that one applicant, though. I think that's something town would need to do.
So should it be done prior, before, prior to adopting this?
We don't know, though, what.
So I always plan for worst-case scenarios. And I know you guys have said that you don't think it's ever going to be built. But I just always, just personally, I always like to know, what is my worst-case scenario, and let's plan for it.
What would you do, though? You would want to add traffic lights or widen Elliot Street, or?
No, not widen it, obviously.
You can't widen it. There's no room to widen.
I wouldn't widen it.
I'm not sure what the resolution is.
There's not even room for on-street parking on Elliot, because it's the, two buses, two trucks can't pass.
And then just quickly, so just to wrap this up, if I, if I may, a little bit more detail, again, on the, that the architectural plans are prepared by a licensed architect, the site planned by an engineer, and the landscape plans by a landscape architect. You all know I've had enough of having civil engineers prepare landscape plans. And then I just added to the, the findings that they, about the design guidelines. So I'm sure there's more things we can consider adding, but I just mostly wanted to run through this to show that we can work off of this zoning, that there's, the state is, has got the structure, and we just can fill in the detail. So there's, you know, it's, if we change the structure, then I think having them find it compliant might be more challenging. And I didn't find problems necessarily with the structure itself. So it would need some revision based on the final, you know, map.
I would like to add some, some language that would be more to the, the single family that would be able to become a, a three-family by right. I think looking at a lot of our ADU proposed when we were looking at an ADU bylaw, a lot of the language talking about one entry, you know, maintaining, you know, a dominant front entry or, you know, certain language that maintains the character of a, you know, that it still looks like a single family, appropriate, you know, additions and so forth. I'll have to go back and look at that language, but that sort of jumped out at me that there were a lot of really good things in there that could be applicable to the, the triplex area, that some of the single families that would be converted to three families.
I'm kind of thinking we could split the, the design, some of, some of them as general, and then put them into the Transit, the Elliot Street corridor section and the Blue Hills Parkway section as a separate. And then even Granite Ave might be separate than the other transit areas. Because I actually was thinking a lot about the Granite Ave in doing these and tying them back. But there were some things I put in here that I was thinking would be more for the Elliot Street corridor. But it, so it might be better to, to look at them as they apply to everything, and they apply just to the smaller.
And this is good. I think this is a good, something for us to all go back and, I thank you for...
How much time do we have, though?
We're doing...
If, so what's our next step? And like, we talked about doing our, the map earlier, right? And then we've talked about the zoning itself. So my understanding is we're...
When you say doing the map, what does that mean?
The districts.
The districts, because...
So going back and rehashing it, like, taking away from Granite Street and putting more on the Elliot Street corridor?
No, I'm...
No, so our map is, so we're...
Whether we've made a decision on the map, I guess, is what I, because then, then this zoning, like, this zoning is tied to a different map. I mean, for me, okay, you know, this, it takes a fair amount of time to go in and...
Oh, no, you've done, believe me, you've done a fantastic job.
So the more you change the map, the more work it is to do the zoning. So what I'm suggesting is it would, I think it's good for us to select a map.
Right.
And then for us to say that we think that we want to continue on a path of working on this zoning that, you know, and all the things that we talked about tonight give further consideration to. And then either submit this to the Select Board and it's for their next up, you know, their next vote.
So that goes back to earlier in the meeting when we were talking about process. And I said I had a process question, so I've kind of been waiting for the time to talk about process. So, you know, my understanding is that we have two options. That we can accept the Select Board article, or, or the Planning Board does not have to accept the Select Board article. Is that correct?
We will, following a public hearing, we will be asked for comments on that.
So if we accept, so if we accept the Select Board article, does it mean that the article gets submitted to the warrant by the Planning Board? And does the Planning Board present it at town meeting?
No. Well, it depends. If we ask the Select Board to withdraw their article and submit, and have ours be the only article, my understanding is that the Select Board might consider that. I think the Select Board's interest is having an article, a good zoning article. That's my understanding. Tim, you're working...
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's accurate. So as it stands now, the Planning Board's obligated to have a public hearing on the article that they got from the Select Board. And the way that changes is if the Select Board, for whatever reason, decides to withdraw their article, which the circumstances would be, the Planning Board has an article that they think is better, which, which I think is squarely, you know, within the realm of possibility if the Planning Board wants to do that. But the, by, by drafting an article and submitting it to the Planning Board, according to 48, Section 5, that sort of starts the clock on, this is going to be, you know, they intend on including this on the warrant, 65 days to hold a public hearing, 21 days to make a recommendation to town meeting. So that's kind of, that's the, that's the path that we're on. You don't get off the path, but what, what you can do is have your own article that the Select Board prefers or wants to just get out of the game entirely and, you know, lets the Planning Board have their article.
So if we don't accept their article, it's my understanding that we, that the Planning Board is not required to hold a public meeting?
That is not correct.
That's not correct.
Yeah, you've got to have a public, you've got to hold a public hearing. Now, you can...
I thought because you could, you don't, you could choose not to have a public hearing, but it still goes to town meeting, anyway.
So I did, and Maggie, I got your, I was in a meeting when you called, but I did get in touch with town council on this very question. And I spent the afternoon looking into myself as well. It's uncharted territory. There's no case law. I don't think there's a record of a Planning Board not holding a public hearing. But there is case law on public hearings that were either insufficiently noticed or had some other kind of defect. And sort of the general thought in that case law and in that kind of, in those procedures is basically, the Planning Board, the Planning Board is, you know, it has an advisory role that is stipulated in statute. But ultimately, if something's on the warrant, town meeting gets to vote on what's on the warrant. Otherwise, it would give the Planning Board a kind of preemptory veto on any zoning article, which is not really what the intent of the statute is. And so, you know, what the statute is really kind of about is the Planning Board having an opportunity to, A, hold a public hearing so that the public can understand what the article is, so the Planning Board can get feedback from the public, and then the Planning Board can make a recommendation to town meeting based on that public hearing. But ultimately, you know, it hasn't happened. But I, I think, I think the direction that at least town council's thinking, and they're going to get in touch with the Attorney General's Office, the municipal law unit, to confirm kind of what their thinking is. But basically, you know, you know, he says, "Insofar as the Planning Board report informs town meeting members regarding the outcome of the hearing and the Planning Board's recommendation, a town meeting member wouldn't really be in any worse position by virtue of the lack of a hearing than they would be by the lack of a report on a hearing that was held." So it's just kind of like, the statute requires it, but the statute doesn't say, if you don't have it, you know, forty lashes with a wet noodle, it just, you go to town meeting, and town meeting doesn't have the benefit of the Planning Board's recommendation.
So we don't have to make a recommendation after the public hearing?
So like, I, so it's, I'm still, yeah, I'm still under the impression that the Planning Board does not have to hold it, so we'll wait for...
No, you, you've referenced the late Alex Weis side a number of times. Alex has, in my experience on the board, has called the Planning Board out when we have not had a public hearing. He was one who absolutely thought that the public hearing was mandatory.
And he also thinks this whole thing's illegal.
Yeah.
Just pointing out the thought about the public hearing. If you, you want to get public comment, then why would you not have a public hearing? If you want the public, if you want the public to be informed, why not advertise it in the newspaper that you're having this public hearing? Not having it is a disservice, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just asking questions because we have been asked, you know, and we've had emails from residents questioning the process. So I am trying to understand the process. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just trying to get clarity on the process. As you all know, like, I personally don't support the Select Board's article. I think, you know, that, as we've discussed, that it's not a good article, and...
What's, what's, what do you mean, it's not a good article?
Well, the article that they wrote, there was no design guidelines, there was no standards. You know, they didn't reach out to the neighborhoods who would be impacted. And I know that all comes under the title of public hearing. But as written, before you touched it, we all were in agreement, it was not a good article. So I don't personally want to accept the Select Board's article. So I don't know if we, like, should take a vote, if the Planning Board wants to accept the Select Board article as ours.
I don't think we have to decide that right now.
I would suggest...
Well, the problem is that the Select Board hears that it's the latest and greatest from the Planning Board and then runs with another decision. And that's a problem I have, because it's misrepresenting me. And I'm kind of with Maggie in that I don't, not only do I not agree with the Select Board's article, I think we should go back to the maps and take some units away from Granite Ave and put more units on Elliot Street and get it. I don't think we're done there. But we're jumping into guidelines now when we're talking about accepting the maps and once again, pushing this thing forward. And it's not, I don't feel that it's, you know, I'm not on board with it. But if you want to have a vote and it's four to one, and I'm the only guy in opposition, then great. But I still think there's a lot more work to do with the distribution of density throughout the town, is my feeling. And we're jumping into guidelines, and that's great. And, and once again, we're always up against time, up against time, so we're going to just...
I guess what we, what we had talked about was wanting to put forth what we thought was the best zoning that we could do that was compliant. And so there was talk about writing zoning. I asked who would do it. I spent hours doing it.
I'm not saying the work isn't great, Cheryl, and I don't, believe me, it's something I never would do, and it's fantastic. I don't even have the ability to do it. I think it's great.
But here's what my point about that is, it becomes our work when we spend the time going through it line by line. And that's, in my experience on the board, when we've worked on zoning, which we have, we've accepted zoning articles from developers.
Okay.
And we've taken that to be Planning Board zoning. And we've taken citizens' petitions and taken those and making those Planning Board articles. And so I think we're getting into this sort of idea of sort of turf and ownership here, when what we really should be thinking about is the language of the zoning.
I disagree. It's not turf and ownership. It's what's the best for the town. And I don't think 1N or 1P is best for the town right now. I think we could do better. I think we can do more.
I know that you've talked about the maps a lot, and my feeling is if that map for the Elliot Street corridor moves a little bit, it doesn't change your guidelines, it doesn't change your process that you're outlining in here, it doesn't change whether you make certain requirements mandatory here. And if we don't spend time line by line on this, we won't, think about that.
I'm not saying we don't spend time on that.
Think about how many meetings we've talked about maps. Think about how many meetings we've talked about maps and how many meetings we've talked about language.
And we're getting so close on the maps.
And we have spent zero on the language, except for this tonight.
But you're crushing it on the language. So if we spend a little more time on the maps, then it'd be a lot easier to apply our new maps to your grade zoning.
What we're talking about here in terms of processes is what we're doing with language. And my suggestion here is by taking a jump at this, at jumping at the language, is to make this our language and send it to the plan, send it to the select board.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Great, so we're rushing it just like we're rushing the maps.
Yeah.
I really have a hard time with that.
We have a deadline.
So it just.
We have a deadline. What if we waited until January or February?
No.
Is someone going to sue us January 2nd?
You know what?
Look, we can avoid this forever, but that's how I feel, I'm sorry, but, okay.
So, and, and I know, and Maggie, I just want you, I don't mind you saying that it's a bad bylaw, like, I, there's no pride of authorship here. I was asked to, to put something together by the select board, but as the guy that is putting this together for the select board, the select board has not had the benefit of definitive decision-making from the planning board on districts or language or procedures. And so the best that I've been able to give them is, we talk about this every two weeks, we move the ball forward on, on districts, on dimensional parameters, not so much on the language and the procedures, but now I'm in the, because what they've wanted is to keep this language as updated as possible and as consistent as possible with the planning board's thinking. And, and you all have been working very hard, and it's not a critique, but like, there hasn't been definitive decision-making. So now I'm in the position where, okay, I'm looking at 1N, and if the select board wants updated language that reflects kind of where we are, I have to just go back to 1N and update the language and make my best guess about what the right site plan review procedures are, what the right design guideline procedures are. And so I think that's where, you know, if, it's, it could, and, and I'm not looking for like, sympathy or anything, I, you know, everyone knows I'm kind of in the middle of this, but like, their interest is, you know, as we've stated before, is having an article that is ready for town meeting so that we can hit our compliance deadlines. That's the prime, they, I mean, I, I think they care about what's inside it, but not so much as they wouldn't just defer to the planning board on the language. And, you know, I've been doing my best to keep it updated and not getting ahead of what the planning board's thinking is, but like, we're approaching a point where that warrant deadline is coming, you know, a public hearing deadline is coming, like, this language needs to start looking how it's going to look for the warrant. And without kind of the planning board planting a flag and saying, this is what, we want this to be this, we want this to be this, we want this to be this, it's kind of me making my best guess based on the conversations that we have and giving that to the select board.
Do me, do me a favor and make sure that you say that when you go in front of the select board. This is my opinion, not the, not the planning board's opinion, but mine.
Well, Jim, I mean, yes, okay, that's fine. I, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to be the guy that is, because again, the select board is, you know, they're reading this stuff, they're, they're, they're up to speed, but they're not planning thinkers in the way that this planning board is. And I don't want this pinned on me, right? And so, I mean, if, I don't consider any of this stuff to be my personal opinion, right? My zoning would look a lot different than what the select board has that I wrote for them, and it would look a lot different than what you all are talking about. And so I am walking a line between interpreting like, these are the priorities that the planning board has had, and, you know, we want to have, you know, there's a little density here and there's a little density there, and these are the heights, and like, you know, UTEAL comes and talks about things and no one really objected to this, so maybe that's okay. Like, it's all just guessing as, as to what is going to be acceptable. And, you know, that's kind of, again, there's no pride of authorship. Like, I don't, you know, I'm trying to do my best job for the people that are asking me to write this stuff, but it's also me kind of trying to make my best guess as to what your priorities are, based on the conversations we have. And, and again, without that definitive decision-making, it's kind of, I mean, even right now, like, select board's going to want to see language that is, again, as, as close to the current thinking here at the planning board, because here is where all of that discussion is happening. And, you know, what, what am I going to give them? I, I'm looking at Cheryl's edits, I think people have been receptive to a lot of Cheryl's edits, so, okay.
They've been receptive because Cheryl's put a lot of time into it. And we're respect, we're respectful, not just receptive, we're respectful of Cheryl's time. And so we, we had to, you know, we have to listen to her inputs. I don't have to agree with, with it, and I don't have to, I've said it before and I've asked this question before about the select board's article, is I don't want people to be confused, that I am afraid that if the, it comes off as it's got the planning board's stamp of approval, that we, we approve of this plan. I, I have said this, you know, I've been, you know, pretty vocal about it. I'm not in support of 2,500 units and it's really difficult to come up with a unit count until our fiscal analysis is in. And I don't know how we can possibly do that in a timely manner. And we, you know, both you and Cheryl have talked about, we can do so much better if we had time, we had more time. So to Jim's point, I'm okay with not putting together a compliant guideline. I still think we should play ball, I think it's unfair that I'm getting labeled as, I don't want to be compliant. I still think we should play ball with the state, I recognize that there is a law, and I just feel like we need to create zoning. And our town is ripe for development. I want to see good development in the places where it makes sense. And why not just take baby steps and say, this is the best we could do at this moment in time? It is a moment in time. And who knows what's going to happen next year to the guidelines after the 160 towns start paying attention and start having their discussions? Because I've been watching these discussions, I've been following, there's pushback from Waltham, there's pushback from Redding, pushback from Manchester and Hamilton. I've been following it. And I just don't want to rush into something that we're going to regret, but I do recognize there's a law and I want to move forward with something. I just don't want to move forward with 2,500 units.
So much better said than I could have ever done, nice job.
So I can't support the selectman's article. I just can't. And I don't want all of Cheryl's hard work to be like hijacked into a selectman's article because I think a lot of it is so good and Cheryl's so thoughtful. Like, it should be part of a planning board article, it's our work, it's our work collaboratively.
I mean, I think it could be that, I mean, it could be our own article, but, you know, whether we hear back about any change in designation, my efforts have always been that we, we have to go with where we understand our compliance to be now. This is where you and I differ, because I have felt that no matter, these guidelines actually, and these process steps would apply whether it's half the number of units or the number of units that we know to be compliant now. And that's why I think this language is so important, that's why I've been advocating for us to get to it. And I had been hoping we would get more, some more guidance from outside consultants on it, but it's so important, I ran for reelection in part because of this and East Milton Square. I felt as if I had some experience and skill set that I, of all my time on the board, these are the two biggest initiatives for this town. And so I have found the time, made the time to put it into what I think will work for this. And so you know I've been not trying to fight whether we do it or not, I've been trying to find a way, how can it work in Milton? I think I've been studying Milton, what's on the ground, and trying to put that into these guidelines in a way that we can, when somebody reads these, they're going to come back to us with something that we find acceptable. And, you know, so even if it's less units, this part, thinking about this, Maggie, you thinking about the planting width? I mean, it sounds minor, but these things are huge, you know? When you get these applications, like when we were looking at that parking lot just for Bents recently, the impact of a parking lot, the lighting of it, the landscaping of it, the screening of it. So, you know, Jim, in the past, I've said, this is really what I want to get to, it's why, because it applies no matter how many units this is. And thinking about the smaller places versus the bigger places versus the historic places, I mean, I, all of you have thoughts that can, you know, can get put into this as well. And the more it gets, if it gets put on the website, other people who have been experienced at this, someone like Pete Jackson, who's a former planning board member, they can start looking at it and providing comments on that too and make it that much better. So that's why I'm advocating for really, you know, spending some time on this and, you know, and having it, if you don't want it to be a select board article, we call it the planning board article. It, to me, it, it doesn't matter. What matters is having something, I much have, much rather have something I think I could support more strongly, go to, be what goes to town meeting.
Yeah, I, I just think we have to work out the maps first.
I do, yeah, and I just.
Just me.
No, and I know, Sean, you haven't had a chance to comment, so I want to give you a chance.
I haven't asked for a chance.
Okay, all right, make sure you do. But I was just going to say, I still am struggling with the maps as well, and I just, and I, I love everything that you've put into, because I think this is all part of it and I think we can do it in parallel, working. I am still very, very concerned. My, my goal in this whole process is to comply with the law, but, but impact the least number of, of current single-family homes and residences. And I think that's, the speaker who spoke earlier was saying, you know, let's do it in the right, the right places. I still feel like we have, we have turned over almost every stone, but, Tim, could you remind me, because I just wanted to go back, why, because I think existing multifamily housing, as much as we can utilize what already exists, did we look at Quissetbrooke? And what was in Winter Valley, what was the reason for Winter Valley? I'm not looking to redevelop either one of those, I want to, but those are multifamily housing, and we've looked at Fuller Village, but have we taken a real close look? Because I, I'm just really concerned about the, the triplex area and the lack of, along that Elliot Street corridor, I know you're saying add more, it is so dense up there, it is really hard to put any, anything else up there, where I would love to, to not, you know, zone over the beautiful streets like, you know, Cliff Road, Norway, you know, there's, that's, you know, that's as much of the Columbine Cliff neighborhood as Columbine Road. It's, you know, it's all really important. And if we could look at Quissetbrooke, I just want to make sure that we have tried everything possible. And I love the way UTEAL has been, you know, giving us sort of these districts to look at, and then you can choose A, B, you know, it's sort of a menu of options that we've been given. I know it does, one throws off the other, but I just want to make sure that the town knows that we have looked at every bit of existing multifamily housing or parcels that, that are possible. And I don't know if UTEAL, we are, I know, we've utilized most of our funding there, but if there is any way to just examine those as, as possible sites that would alleviate Granite Ave, you know, that would, again, take off maybe, you know, instead of that, you know, the triplex area, which I just see as probably the most detrimental right now, impact to the, to the physical character of the town.
I think Meredith, all of, all of these areas are going to be impacted, and prioritizing, you know, sort of one over another is, you know.
But it's least, you know, but it's, if it's multifamily housing and we're zoning, it's sort of like zoning over 88 Warf, it's zoning over Hendry's, I'm looking at all the multifamily.
But you know, when you, when you pick the multifamily sites already, you're picking areas that already have multifamily that are likely going to get redeveloped, even higher level of density, because what we've looked at before is that because they're large areas, you've got to have a lot of units on them, it's going to push us way, what Tim showed us before. It pushed us way over the total number of units and we didn't have contiguous, continuity of the district. So, you know, Tim, if you, if I'm misstating that in any way.
But Quissetbrooke has over five acres, and so does Winter Valley. So they, they would be standalone sub-districts.
What I'm saying is that the zoning that you would apply to them would, because they're large, my understanding, Tim, when you looked at those before.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't look at Quissetbrooke or Winter Valley. And, and I think the thinking, I mean, and, and we can go back and, you know, and.
Could we just see those?
We hear, I mean, we hear from folks on Granite Ave, and, and again, I don't disbelieve any of this, it's, it's entirely credible. But then you look at Canton Ave, right? And we will hear the same thing on Canton Ave, all right? A high school with Winter Valley, with the 40B, with 111 Highland, you know? So there's, there's nowhere in town that makes good sense for any of this, right? So what, what you have to do is fall back on, you know, because if you're going to do Quissetbrooke, why not do, why not go back to Brush Hill Road? Why not go back to any other large parcel or draw a five acre line around somewhere else? And I understand the thinking behind taking advantage of existing multifamily, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to do some math real quick, because, because it is, it is a large site, right? And so you start to run into the, sort of the Brush Hill Road problem that we had, where in order to get an appreciable density that's not going to bring down the overall number, now you're putting 600, 700 units on Canton Ave.
And I guess that's what I want to be able to illustrate to town meeting members or to, you know, whoever, like, why did we pick Hendry, you know, why did we pick, pick all those multifamily sites, but we didn't choose other multifamily sites?
And Quissetbrooke would not yield as many net new. So the problem with Granite Ave, they're all net new. So like in your, your latest, you know, you did the 25, you know, 2,600 units, but net new was 1,700.
Almost 18.
That's still a significant of net new, and we're not including the 540Bs that are coming onsite, and that's, as a side note, we have to remind RKG about that, to factor that into their analysis. So net new of 1,700 from this plus the 500, that's a lot all at once. And so if you factor in Quissetbrooke, Fuller, Winter Valley, they're not all going to be net new.
And if more units are built at Quissetbrooke, that's not the worst thing. And even if Fuller does a little more development, that's not the worst thing.
And I don't want to put Tim on the spot right now, but I'm just.
No, I'm saying for us, not for him.
But maybe for our next meeting, Tim, I don't know if you could just, you know, run that model or UTEAL could just run those, just so we see what that would look like as possible.
So if we're going to focus on mapping, I'm going to submit my, I'm going to take another stab at revising this, and I'm going to submit this to the select board for their consideration next week.
As the Cheryl plan.
As a citizen of the town of Milton.
No, I think that's.
Go forward, go for it.
I think that's fine, because what Cheryl has put in is zoning language.
Sure.
Which I think is great.
There's going to be a map attached to it, right? It's not just going to be zoning language, there's going to be a map attached to it.
Well, they, no, she, she hasn't changed the map.
It's just the language?
It's just the language, because the, the map is the same of what was amended.
The map that they have attached to the zoning?
No, the map, the map, this zoning will have to get adjusted to reflect a map.
That's the map that we didn't want.
Because it's the map that was, I think, one.
We just studied it and it became.
So this will be some kind, more or less an article, right? Yeah, there'll be zoning in a map.
They're going to, they'll have to have a map to go with the zoning, and this zoning that I worked off of was based on a map that represented the tiered transit area. So I think that, Tim, I don't know.
So I'm going to give you a great example, I'm going to, I'm going to tell them that N is the map, because that's the latest thing that reflects.
So then I'm going to update.
That reflects planning board priorities.
I'm going to update this zoning language to be the 1N.
So my concern with this goes back to the letter that a resident wrote. So remember, Cheryl, we talked about a letter that a resident wrote and that the planning board said, we'll just take that and just adopt it. And you raised the concern, should we be doing that, is that setting a bad precedent? And you raised the concern, should we be doing that, is that setting a bad precedent? So to me, this seems like the same thing. So you were, you as a resident are gonna be taking your work and sending it to the select board. So does that allow every resident in town to go and send the select board their language?
They can decide whether they want to take it up or not. But I feel like it's, it's better, if we, it's a better plan in my mind than if this board doesn't want to take any action, and what goes forward is what the select board has-
We haven't discussed no action. That has never been-
The timing, I'm talking about no action by the deadline that the select board has set. Because they've, and there are, an article, they've said, will be on the warrant for that December 4th town meeting.
I would like to continue working on this, like, I would like to continue to work on this zoning language.
Well, we can.
We have, we have-
We have some work on it, we can work on it.
I'm not gonna continue working on language on behalf of this board if this board is not making a commitment to move it forward. I feel like that would be a waste of my time. And so I need to hear that this board is interested in that.
I'm interested in moving this forward, absolutely. No, I, I think that's not what we're saying, but-
Define move forward? Is it take the existing maps, pick one and then write guidelines around it? Or is it adjust the maps to, to our zoning, to our liking?
This is not our, I, I don't think you're asking us to accept what you presented tonight for the first time as the final language.
No.
So that's, I want to make sure. But if it gets sent to the select board, they may take that as the final language. And I would love the opportunity to keep working on this.
So I guess the question is, you know, if, like the option 1N that's been talked about. And so you've said, Meredith, that you think you want 1N not to be the map, because you would like other areas to be studied. And so that gives us maybe next-
1N is so far the best, but it's-
I'm just trying to work timeline. So that means if we do another round with UTEL, and they're able to do it by next week, Tim? Are they able to do it by next week?
I'll have to ask.
So that puts us at, I'm just thinking about the calendar. We just said what the public hearing date was. And then you, like I said, I took a, a leap to move certain things forward, but I don't want to have to keep changing for every map. That might come up every week, a new map, and then I go and write zoning that has to change with that. So I had kind of been waiting, but I thought 1N was getting us close. But we didn't even have language from Tim yet that reflected 1N. So anyway, it's just, I'm concerned about time.
Yeah, I understand.
So I kind of feel like all the, we've discussed that, and you said tonight that our site plan approval process is, is pretty weak. And that you've kind of want to, to bolster up all the language in site plan approval. So I feel like that's what you're concerned about, that's what we're concerned about. We discussed it at 4:40, that we had limited input. So I would say, why don't we take your, like, all your site plan approval language and deal with that separately, like outside of the article?
The problem I see is, is the warrant, will the, is there time to get an article that quickly done for, for this special town meeting? Is my concern about that.
And that's my concern about this, the timing on this as well, which is not, I don't think it's anyone's fault. I think it's just-
I know, and it's just a shame, because Tim, you know, he just said that this isn't the way he would want it. You know, and Tim has been put in, in a tough position. And we all have been put in a tough position with this deadline. You know, and as we talked about, it's the greatest amount of zoning in such the, the shortest amount of time period. So if Tim is saying it's not what he would be doing, you know, he's just doing it to make a deadline.
So one thing to remember, too, is like the zoning, let's, Tim, does this also go to the AG like all zoning does?
Yeah.
So not only does HLC have to review it for compliance, the AG has to review it for compliance. And my, hasn't it been taking like six months to get that approval? Plus or minus?
It's sometimes more, sometimes less.
My understanding was with this, it's immediate, the AG, that this is, this is effective as soon as it's voted at town meeting?
I mean, all, all zoning is effective, retroactive to its date, but also if the AG comes back and says it's no good, then it's certain-
So I guess my point about it was, we can continue to work on the zoning and even the map, and even request a February town meet, special town meeting. So if, I'm not sure the, the select board would entertain that. But the May town meeting, you know, annual town meeting is there. And if the zoning hasn't really been, so we have December 4th. When will we hear that it's actually approved? And someone would actually have the timeframe to submit an application? Could we get something updated that, basically, we're using that review time period and then update anything that we felt like needed updating? So we were not like taking our foot off the gas pedal on continuing to work on it once this gets submitted. Because, you know, once it's submitted and you have the warrant committee and town meeting and all of that, we have some time in there.
To like switch the tests? I don't think you could do that.
Not to switch it, no, you would, you would amend it, you would amend it.
Tell the HLC, hey, we've got a new one?
Yeah. Zoning is amended all the time.
So Mike, I think tonight, just for the sake of time, I think that what we would like to do is we keep moving forward, this is excellent. I think now, having listened to what, you know, some of the things that we discussed, you know, maybe looking at going through that language again, just a second time after we all can take a look and just digest some of that language, look for any additional things, you know, we would like to, suggestions we would like to make. And simultaneously, if we could look at just making sure any other, Quissetbrooke, Winter Valley, any other options are out there that we just have not been looking at.
I don't think, I don't think that the language is really the issue. And I don't think seeking out Quissetbrooke or any other location that allows us to tweak the numbers is really getting us where we're trying to go. There's a, there's a, there's a significant difference between what you're talking about and what Cheryl's an advocate for, what the select board has already prepared in an article. And, and it is the difference between a, an article that complies with 2,461 units and what you're describing as, I think you're saying, hey, what's right for Milton? So we can discuss the language all we want. Your language is great, what you wrote is terrific. And I think whatever article is written, it should be a priority. So I think that's great, but our problem isn't, can we agree on the language? And everything that was, we discussed tonight, or that you discussed tonight, or outlined tonight? It's terrific. But, you know, the, and there are, there are plenty in town on both sides. There are those that are advocates for it, and, and they bang the drum and bow, complying with the law. And there are other people that are on the other side that's saying, this is too overwhelming for Milton. We have too many issues, we can't handle it, we have too much traffic, it's gonna disrupt neighborhoods. We don't even know what it's gonna cost. So we have people on both sides. And, and I think there's, as the awareness, as the awareness in the town rises, the number of people on both sides are gonna continue to grow. Our issue on this board is, we don't, we can't get to agreement on, you know, what we should zone for, how many units we should zone for. The likelihood is that the net new units is somewhere around 1,700, you know. Maybe, maybe with Quissetbrooke or some other location that we, we try to zone, maybe it becomes 1,600. But, you know, right? I mean, that's really what's gonna happen, and I think we're wasting time.
I think-
I was an advocate, if I could just wrap this up, I was an advocate for giving town meeting two options. And, you know, I sincerely don't think that 10 people in a town of 28,000, 10 people, five on the select board and five on the planning board, should be deciding the fate of planning in Milton. You know, I really think that town meeting, and there's a reason we have town meeting, it's a representative body for the entire town. But if they're only given one choice, if you're on the side that's an advocate for it, you could say, well, that's pretty risky. You know, if you're an advocate for it, it could not pass in town meeting, and we get nothing. So having a choice in town meeting is something I feel is an appropriate thing to do. What's gonna get really hard is this board, I don't think, you know, will get to a point where we'll agree on what's an appropriate number of units. There are opportunities to zone in Milton. This process has, has helped us discover there are opportunities to zone in Milton. We probably wouldn't have discovered that as quickly if we weren't forced to. But we know that we've got, we've got areas within the town that we absolutely could zone. Would we zone what we've zoned on Granite Ave to the extent that we have? No, we wouldn't. But is there a good opportunity on Granite Ave? I think there certainly is. And I think we found a good opportunity at Milton Station, I think we found a good opportunity at Matapan Station. But, you know, the problem that we're having amongst our board is, we're not talking about good, appropriate zoning. We're talking about what we'll be enforced to do by the state. And that's the impasse that we have.
I mean, my feeling is whether I think this is the appropriate number of units or not, I have viewed as irrelevant. I have viewed that it's the law, and we owe it to town meeting to deliver something that, the best that we can that's compliant with the law, and then let town meeting make a decision. And to me, like, delivering something that doesn't meet the law is like, why would we do that? We should spend more time on it, to your point. I mean, I, I do think there's opportunity. I mean, people talk all the time about, we're a residential town, and we have residential tax base, and we don't have a commercial tax base, and we're looking at overrides periodically as a result of that, right? And some people say, stop having it be on the residential, right? But one thing that the late John Cronin would say is that multifamily residential also generates a lot of revenue for the town. And he would, and in fact, when we did the Milton Village overlay, we just, you may be surprised, but 88 Warf is one of the largest taxpayers in town, and extra space storage is right there, too. But Fuller Village is way up there. And so if you, so the, it's not just commercial that can help with the tax base, but multifamily can help with the tax base, too. So are there opportunities to, like, I saw Milton Village as an opportunity, I see East Milton Square as an opportunity. You don't, we don't generate a lot of tax revenue from those business districts. So I know, you know, some people are very concerned about tax revenue. And so there is opportunity with some zoning. If we were thinking about it from not having something handed to us from the state, we might be looking at this zoning to help us from a tax revenue point of view, right? But the way I see it is, as you said, it's not just for the 10 of us to decide. The select board is the highest elected body, like a mayor, has decided that the town should be compliant, and they've taken a vote, and they want that to go to town meeting. So my view is, we need to get, we need to deliver what we think is the best. You've seen that they're looking for us, but if they don't get it from us, they're going to take the latest that's been produced by our consultants, right? So-
As, as I've said before, and I'm not even sure, because I've only seen a draft of what was written, but the second letter that the select board prepared was an argument. They prepared an argument for, to support a position, as I read this, to support a position that we could be an adjacent community.
We should hear before next week if this is right.
Right, so my point is, you know, they have, they have, they have two avenues. They've already passed an article that complies with 25%. And while they did that, they're asking for relief.
Right, because they're still following a path of compliance. And if we hear back that, that they, the state agrees with us, then most likely what changes is the map. And maybe some of the parameters, like in the standards, which are an easy fix, or an easy change in the zoning itself, because those are those dimensional standards. But many of the other things that you, that we put in that language of the zoning. Sean, you say that, that you're not so concerned about the language, but I can tell you, when we've permitted projects, that language has been what we have to follow in, in granting that permit. And now when we don't have a special permit, that language is incredibly important, because that, that's what the applicant is held to.
No, you, I either misstated or you misunderstood. I value the language. All I'm saying is that there's a bigger issue out here than the language. The language is great, we're gonna have to have the language, I'm a proponent for it.
Okay.
But it's, I probably misstated what I had intended to say. We're, we're talking about the language, but the bigger issue isn't getting resolved. You know, and, and my opinion is, we, this is gonna be, as you can see from all the communities, there are, there are probably at least eight communities right now that are pushing back against this. We're not the only one. This is gonna get resolved over time. I would suggest, my preference would be to zone something that is appropriate for the town of Milton. I could even, and I've said this to you recently, I would even accept zoning up to 10%. And we would always have a chance, if we, if over time, we were driven to the 25%, to ratchet up to 25%. But once you go to 25, you can't come back down to 10.
Why not?
How would you ever do that?
You amend your map.
It has to go back to town meeting to amend. I don't think that would happen.
It'll never happen.
It would never happen.
Why wouldn't it?
Once zoning is written-
I've seen town meeting amend zoning all the time.
I know, but it's been miners-
Pull back on something like that? I don't think so.
Why? You pull back from a greater number to a smaller number? Wouldn't most townspeople just want to do that?
I have no idea, but I doubt it.
I think we keep moving forward, we keep, you know, keep this going. Maybe UTEL can look at those, just possible two other maps. We look at the language that Cheryl has worked really hard on, because I think so much, it was very little that I would make changes to. I know Maggie, you had some items in, but I'd like to look at, just look, think, look it over again.
So I'm gonna amend that also to reflect the 1N option instead of the tiered. And I'll add a few things that we discussed.
Yeah, that's great, I would agree with that, as far as-
And send it early next week for discussion at our meeting next week.
That sounds great.
So we didn't really come to a conclusion if it's-
We haven't voted on it, like, nothing's-
Yeah, or like it's a select board's article. Because again, I don't, it's still a select board's article.
With Cheryl's input and Tim's input is really what it is. And that's okay, that's the way it's gonna be, it's fine.
Well, it's, yeah. All right, so given that's, I would agree, I, that's the best that we've made it so far, I guess. That's how, that's the best-
But just as a caveat, we are not in agreement. So when Tim goes to present it to the select board, I don't want him to say it's the planning board-
Latest and greatest from the planning board.
Is the latest and greatest, correct. I don't want it to be misrepresented, that we are in agreement with it. We've discussed, he can certainly say it's been discussed at the planning board, but there, it has not, there has not been a universal buy-in from the planning board at this point in time.
You got it.
Okay. All right, so-
So one thing I would, I would have you think about for next meeting is the fact that the only thing in that language that ties to the maps is the name of the district and the dimensional standards. So if what you're real concerned with really is the map and the number of units, you can support the language and not necessarily support the map.
Right.
So think about that.
I totally get that.
Because I, you know-
That's a good point.
And if for some reason we can't find a consensus on the number, I feel like maybe there should be an article just on-
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want them at least to use the language that we agree is better than theirs? If it's, if the map is the point of contention, because the map is what's generating the total number of units. Think about that, because I think it would be much better if we can send it as a planning board. And it, look, we have agreement on that language from what I've heard, with some, you know, you know, I think relatively minor revisions overall. And the caveat then, the caveat then could be that the dimensional standard, so maybe somebody, I mean, even if you think about what's setting that density in there is going to be the height and the lot coverage, right? So just say, you know, where there's disagreement is on those. And so it's not just everything.
Right, yes.
Because that's what it's still down to, I think.
I do want to look, look at some specific, some of the heights.
Yeah, of course.
Like six stories, 75. I just want to make, see what, what, you know, is consistent with what are, the height of our buildings and.
Look back at the analysis that I did, that last page, which had the spreadsheet because it's all in there, the heights, you know.
And I think there should be a bonus opportunity. So we all know we need affordable housing. And why not create an opportunity for more units or a greater story via special permit if, if the developer gives more affordability?
Well, that's what I understand is going to happen.
Well, that's great if Granite Ave isn't at 700 units.
Correct.
We get Granite Ave down to three or four.
Yeah.
But I mean, to, to take our existing map and start doing stuff like that is looking for trouble.
Okay, so we just, I just, we have just a few minutes and I do just want to hit on the discussion of the fiscal impact analysis. And RKG is not here with us tonight, correct?
That's right.
That's right, okay. So I know we were waiting, there was some information that came in regarding police, you know. It came in sort of just today, so I don't know if people have really had a chance to look at that. I feel like we still are waiting to get a lot more information.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we agree to ask them to do analysis based on option 1N even if it's not deemed to be the final? Because it would give us that much more information than what, I think it's a step, a stepping stone piece of information.
I think as long as it's within our budget, I actually think we should because I, I struggle with some of what they have there. And I'll, and I'll give you an example. The analysis that Eric presented of the, of the buildings that would be built and the number of units in the building, right? And this is, it was, Tim, it was presented again on Tuesday, right? Was it Tuesday? Yeah. So, and, and this is where I really, there's 262 units on that one slide. 262 if you took, I think it's the four buildings and put them together. And the column that indicates the cost that the school system, the impact in terms of cost for the school system, it's around $300,000. It's a little less than $300,000. They identify the cost of educating a student as slightly less than $15,000, $14,000 and change. So what I extrapolate from that is $300,000 of school cost, $15,000 a student, as 20 students. So that is saying that 262 units will only contribute, 262 units will only contribute 20 students to the school system. It's really hard for me to imagine that.
That's consistent with existing multifamily.
Yeah.
So he said he had the data to back it up. So maybe what he needs to do is present or provide some of the data, Tim?
Yeah.
Because I think people, Sean's not going to be the only one who questions it. So the data in the background on it is going to be helpful.
There'll, there'll be plenty that'll question that. And, you know, I, I think someone had, had indicated that Elliot Street has one student or no students, or I can't remember what it was. But, and Elliot's, what, 36 units in Elliot? I think there's 36 units.
131 or 36?
Uh, 131.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, we're talking 262. It's really, I, I understand Eric's going to cite the data that's out there. But it really strikes me that we're, we're building a community for, for couples and singles. You know, it doesn't seem, I mean, his, you know, this, this was about families. And I do believe that the result will be that people will leave their homes, they'll move into these apartments and the students will be in the homes. I've seen this in my own neighborhood, my neighbors on my right side and my left side. The one went to Home, Inc., others went to Quisset Brook. Families come into their homes. So you're going to get the results. His, his model isn't demonstrating that. But I struggled with 262 and 20 students. And I also struggled with the fact that there's, there's, there's no part of his model that's recognizing what I just said, that residents in our community, that their homes are empty, they will move into these apartments if this is what we create for them. And, and that's what we'll have, we'll have an increase in the students.
Tim did, we did talk about, I think, a little bit about that at the last meeting. But one thing to your number, I would ask, Tim, if you could ask him about is that analysis that I did about how many two beds we have versus one beds, whether that changes any of their underlying assumptions? So like if you had a two-thirds, or actually you should have some three beds thrown in there, like the, I don't have it with me, but residents in East Milton has, I think, 10 three beds out of that 92. So if you throw some three beds in, whatever percentage that is, actually that, that one might be a good one to look at percentage wise because it has studios, ones, twos, and threes. They're, they're small units though.
Yeah.
So if you have a three bed at 1,100 and some square feet, that's like a two bed per these.
Cheryl, here's the other part that doesn't really work. The, that model of those large buildings, that probably is fine for what we're currently looking on in Granite Ave, Matapan Station, Milton Station, but not for Elliot Street and, and, and not for any of the areas where we, we refer to three family homes, right, as a, as kind of a category.
Yeah, but that FAR, that FAR that I, if you put it in FAR 0.5 on a 7,500 square foot lot, you're looking at only 3750 for square footage total.
Okay.
So, so then if you have a larger lot in that district and you have 0.5, let's say the 10,000 square foot, right? Now you can do 5,000 square feet, so you can do some bigger units. The idea of it is to be scaled like that. So on a smaller lot, you're going to have, you know, smaller square footage. On a larger lot, you could get a little bit more, just like you would.
I understand that.
So that's where the FAR really is an important parameter.
My concern is, is a potential misrepresentation of reality. My concern is a misrepresentation of the burden that the school system will actually have.
So if we agree on like the, not just 1N, but what the FARs are, then, then I think we're not, we're going more fine tuned to what we're looking at in Milton, not just some hypotheticals. That's why I'd like him to look at.
Look at that 1N.
That 1N. And I'd like him to look at some of the, that analysis that I presented tonight on the mix because I think that could inform, it, yeah, it's more precise information to work from.
Well, something that's not a hypothetical and a potentially as valuable data is the 40B projects. They're real. We know where they are. We know, we know how many units, we know how many bedrooms, right? That could be calculated. We could, we could recognize on the 40B projects what that really means.
I mean, they're different.
They are different. They're all different.
They're, the one in East Milton has the smallest sized units for sure.
That, that might not contribute many at all, but.
And the, but, you know, the, there's, I don't see why the 40Bs are the only ones. 440 Granite Ave, 36 Central, 131.
Put them all together.
That's why I looked at those and, you know, there's some variety in there, but none of them are as small as East, the residency.
Cheryl, you only mentioned the 40Bs because it's 530 units. It's a volume, you know, you could throw them all in together.
And maybe he could look at, I know he, he said on, you know, with all his data across the state, it doesn't add that many kids. But maybe he could specifically look at certain towns that have a good school system that draws families to the town, to a town, you know, so look at.
Don't forget, people that are going to be moving, if you're like an empty nester, a widow, and you're looking for a place to move, you can either move to Milton in one of these new developments or you can move to Canton or somewhere else, you can move to Floyd or wherever you're going to go. Your small family unit is going to open up a house for a larger family unit, right? That's what Tim said is happening.
Yeah, to Sean's point, yeah.
But it doesn't mean that it's not going, that's still not going to continue to happen. That's what's been happening, right?
It's just going to happen quicker.
So, all right, so we won't, so those are questions that we have outstanding. We would love to hear just more detail from RKG. And yes, Jay, would you like to join us? Do you have a question?
If it's appropriate at this time.
Yes, and our consultant's not here this evening, but you can pose a question that we can pass on to the consultant. Welcome and.
Thank you. Jay Funling, I live at 39 Seis Lane. And I want to thank RKG for the work that they've done in helping analyze the financial impact of the expanded zoning. I do want to make sure they're including all the relevant costs. I don't have all the details, I don't know exactly what they're including. At first glance, it appears they're not including employee benefits in this analysis. And that's a significant cost that should be considered in the analysis. Healthcare for active employees are quite a few thousand dollars per year. I have a number, but it's late at night and if I say the wrong number, I'm going to get in trouble. So I would suggest RKG to speak to our financial department in town, get the dollar, dollar amount that healthcare is for active employees every year. Pension benefits for non-school employees are about 8% of salary. That's what the, it's not what pays, it's not what, it's not what's paid out of pension every year, but that's what the employees earn every year. And also retiring medical, which some people call OPEB in this town, is also a certain dollar amount per employee per year. Again, I don't want to misspeak. Now, the last item, retiring medical, you won't see that in the town's budget because it's not a cash cost. It's not something we're paying in cash every year, but it is an accounting cost. We'll eventually have to pay it and that should be included. So I would strongly encourage RKG or some intermediary somewhere here to talk to the town financial department, find out, you know, a good number for normal cost of pensions, normal cost of retiring medical and healthcare. And make sure RKG has the information they need to include that in, in their analysis. And that is all.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll try to get those answered and more detail on their data. So I think, is this a good stopping point for us for this evening, do you think?
Well, I just.
Or you did, you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so I know, I wanted to thank our town councils, Peter Mello and Karis North for coming last week. You know, I personally was a little disappointed that they didn't provide the information that I was looking for. You know, I understand the, the really difficult position they're in and I feel for them and I know they report to the Select Board. But we report to the citizens and personally, I feel like we're in a very unique situation and like that I'm in a very unique situation. And I have people coming all, like every day. You'd be, like someone wanders into the nursery and has an opinion. And it's for it, it's against it, and I hear all different opinions. And I kind of feel like I haven't been provided the right information from town council and I just want to learn more. And, and as I said, I've done, you know, a lot of research into different towns and I just want more information so I can make, you know, a really good decision moving forward. And I sort of feel like after last week, town council kind of closed the door on the planning board. And, you know, and I recognize they're in a really tough position. But because of this position, I still feel like it's a position of conflict. And I'm asking the planning board to support a motion that would allow us to get outside legal counsel. And my motion is to authorize Meredith as the planning board chair to interview and hire an attorney to assist the planning board to determine our next steps and, you know, recommend to cap an expenditure of about maybe 15,000. It could be 10 or 15,000, I have no idea what it would cost. But I just think that we should have our own counsel. After last week, I just feel like we need our own counsel.
And what are the next steps you're talking about?
So I would want, I just would like to know our next steps is, I want to know where we stand, the law versus the guidelines. I would like this attorney to review town council's memo to us. I would like them to provide like an, an, a legal argument to say to us, you know, these are the positions or an argument to be made, why are, why the guidelines are not legally enforceable. I just, it's an, for some reason, it's just really bothering me. And I just sort of feel like we should have our own representation. And I know like the school committee has their own outside counsel. I know we have the ability to hire consultants and, you know, and I know as Peter Mello said, reasonable minds can differ. And I just think you should always get two opinions. And we've only gotten one.
Will you repeat your motion?
So my motion is to authorize Meredith as our chair to interview and hire an attorney to assist the planning board to help us determine our next steps. And for a cap of about 15, up to $15,000 of our budget.
I'd second that.
I would open that for discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I wouldn't support that. I mean, town council is the legal representation for the town. We're the legal planning board. It's like somebody voting to say, a vote of no confidence in the planning board so that we should hire a different planning board in some sense? Or we should hire someone else different to write the zoning to be compliant? It just, it just doesn't seem like the right thing. So I understand that there's no guarantee. They gave an opinion, just like I gave you some data tonight. There's no guarantee what a developer will come in with on a particular development site once they get into the economics of it, you know, what would make sense on it. So they're making an estimation of what they think from what they know, what the Attorney General and what the courts would do. And they're in a better position to make that judgment than I am. And we've heard that the Select Board, you know, is the one that has the authority for that level. It's not like we're hiring, this is a town kind of position. It's not like a planning board so specific to planning board that, that town council's out of, it's out of their realm of expertise. So for those reasons, I, I don't, I wouldn't support that.
And I appreciate that and I have, I asked last week and previous for them to provide documentation that the Select Board has the sole hiring authority of an attorney and they haven't provided that yet. So I feel like, as I said, doors are kind of closing. And, and I just feel like there's a conflict. I've, I've spoken to many different attorneys and someone said to me once when I said, oh, should I call up, why don't we look, call up attorneys and get their opinion? And they said, oh, you know, if you call 20 attorneys, you'll get 20 different opinions. However, I haven't gotten 20 different opinions. What the attorneys I have spoken to individually have said, they're, they believe this, that these guidelines are not legally enforceable.
So this, like I would say to you is if you asked me tonight to guarantee that you wouldn't be 530 units on that parcel, I wouldn't guarantee it. So you're asking for a guarantee from an attorney on something that they're not.
I'm not asking for a guarantee. I'm just looking for backup data, a backup opinion. I liked, just when, you know, someone hires you, I'm sure they're getting two estimates.
A second opinion.
Yes, they're getting a second opinion. If you're diagnosed with an illness, you go get a second opinion. I just think it's doing our due diligence.
You know, it's, it's, I, I don't know that I'm ready to say I would support or not support. I don't think I am. But imagine that we went down that way and we did get a second attorney and the second attorney supported what, what town council supported. How would you feel then in terms of what you wanted to zone for Milton?
So I would feel better that, that I did my due diligence and I represented the citizens and I got all the information that I could get to make a sound decision. I mean, I understand people's hesitation, but I just felt like I sort of had to finish my discussion. discussion. Like, I wasn't totally satisfied with town council's response last week. I felt like their letter was weak, and it wasn't what I was looking for, and I was just really disappointed. So I, I just felt like I had to finish this path.
When you said it wasn't what you were looking for, what were you looking for?
I was looking for more of like, not an advice. I was really looking for, this is, this is, you know, our opinion, these are the arguments for why this is, they provided why this is for, they believe that is the law, they listed a couple cases. But, you know, again, Alex Whiteside listed many more examples that guidelines were not legally enforceable, that they provide guidance, and that DHCD, now HLC, was not given the statutory authority.
But they...
To create binding guidelines.
Yeah, but they responded to that last week.
Yeah, they were given the authority to create guidelines as guidance. So there's a discussion point that, that they were not given authority to, to provide real legally binding guidelines.
But what you're saying then is they didn't provide you with what you wanted them to say, because you want them to say what Alex said, but they responded that they didn't agree with Alex, and they cited the case law why they didn't agree.
No, they just, if you read it, they stated the law on one page, they stated, you know, Andrea Campbell's advisory letter, and they just said, in our opinion, we think there could be a possibility of consequences.
But they cited a lot of...
Like, I knew that.
They cited the case law of a recent decision that Milton was involved in for why...
And that was a 40B case. And in that case, DHCD was granted the legal authority.
And they said that they, they see in the law that they were granted the authority here. Anyway, I'm just wondering what, what was that you were missing there?
I just felt like I had to finish my path. And I think that, just like Tim is in the middle of, of this, I feel like town council is in a situation where he's, it's a conflicted area.
Why is it conflicted?
Because the planning board may possibly have a different article than what the select board has.
But they, they said that that's not in any way, they're just giving an opinion about the law. They're not responding to whether, who's submitting an article. That's not what their response is.
I got the feeling that they were a little more loyal to the select board, to be honest with you.
I mean, my, my reading of that was that that's who they say that engages them, but they work for the town, is what they repeated several times.
And then when asked a question...
He's like cited attorney-client privilege at some point.
Yeah, when Sean asked a question, they said that they, they couldn't respond.
Well, I think it's a great idea, only because, you know, I'm all about reclassification and extension of time.
So we have a second on the phone. We have a second, sorry. That's, I just want to, I'm, and I appreciate this, Maggie, and I know this is, this is a really important issue to you, it's to all of us. I'm not ready to hire a legal counsel to challenge our town council. I just, I think that would not be good for the, our town to go ahead to, because if we got different advice, you know, what would we do with that? I think it wouldn't change the situation that we're in right now, honestly.
Really?
And, yeah, if we...
If we got different advice, it wouldn't...
If town council was advising the select board one way and we had different advice, I don't want that dynamic of us against them. I, I just don't think it's good for Milton. And I, out of so much respect for you putting that motion together, and I know this is important, and I think, I think this will be, you know, with 160 other towns, you know, following the rapid transit, the 12, I, I think this is going to be something that will be debated about among towns. And I just don't know if I want us to go down that road, so.
I mean, I understand, I understand my feelings aren't hurt or anything. It's just that I, I just knew that I had to finish it.
I do, I do get that, but...
Yeah, I'm not, I understand it too. And I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm prepared to say yes or no, to be honest with you. I, it's something, I, I think it's a significant, would you consider pulling it back and putting it forth in our next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to, like, get the temperature, you know, and so that's why you kind of forced a discussion.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So I'm fine with withdrawing it. But it's still something that is bothersome to me.
So can maybe, I mean, I would support if you wanted to ask town council whether they, amongst their peers, have had conversations with others, and if there's sort of, you know, in the realm of town council folks, if they are in agreement. Just, it's, it's to your point of more information, but it's not, it's not in any way another opinion from what town council said. So just like, you know, Tim talks to other planners, I'm sure attorneys are talking to one another about the law as well. So, I mean, if that would get at something, more information that you're looking for without having to go to hiring outside counsel.
Yeah. No, that's fine. And I'll just continue my calling up attorneys. And I don't have a problem doing that. But I just...
Yeah, the reason I mentioned what I did earlier in response to that was when somebody has to sort of have an informal conversation with someone versus putting an opinion out there, you know, they may have, it may be a little bit different, because, you know, it's like when I put my stamp on a drawing versus when I do some sketches, you know, I put the stamp on there, it's pretty meaningful. So, you know, that's, anyway, that's why I made the suggestion.
Thank you. I think this was a great conversation. I think a lot of good stuff came out of this tonight. So thank you all, and thank you to the public for joining us. And it is 11:20, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.